Good morning, Assembly and everybody, borough staff. First off, I just want everybody to stand up. I want to give the clerk's office a big round of applause for doing all this. We appreciate you, Madam Clerk, and your staff. Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. It's 9:00 AM. This is a special meeting for Wednesday, October 21st, 2020, one we've been waiting for. We're gonna do video interviews of our five managerial candidates. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Got some feedback going on here. Kate.
Sounds like it's Halloween.
Ted Leonard.
Here.
Dan Mayfield.
Here.
I'm expecting Jesse Sumner, Tamboby.
Here.
You do have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I wonder if we should wait a few minutes for those two, or should we just...
We could probably get through good audience participation.
Okay.
This is the first interview's at 9:30, so we can have a little bit of time.
Let's just do the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? It's gonna be our video interviews today. See, a number of agendas approved. Mr. Haveman, why don't you lead us in the pledge allegiance basis?
................................................
Thank you, Mr. Haveman. Audience participation. This is your opportunity to speak to the Assembly about anything you wish, but primarily, we're doing a managerial search today. You have three minutes to testify. We will take telephonic audience participation also.
Actually, we don't have it, Mr. Mayor.
Actually, like I said, we don't have audience participation. Mr. Haveman, did you want to speak? Go ahead, please.
Okay, I got my timer.
It's up here, Mr. Haveman.
Oh, good. Thank you very much for your assistance.
You're welcome.
My name's Eugene Paul Haveman. I live in the Mattsu Valley. Follow the public process. When the public process is unappropriately, a decision made by the governing body is more like a public interest. At this meeting today, you're doing the introduction on one item for public hearing. That item, excuse me, item is 20-098. An ordinance to the Mattsu City Borough Assembly waiving the witness signature requirements were absentee by mail vote, ballots, with a regular borough election to occur on November 3rd, 2020. You were introducing at this meeting. The meeting's 9:00 in the morning, where it's gonna be a rare opportunity for the public to be able to be here, because most people are working at this time. And then you're introducing, then you're gonna have the public hearing when, on this issue. Monday is special meeting. So introducing on a Wednesday, and then going for public hearing Monday night. And this concerns the operations of how you're gonna handle the borough election that's happening right now, Sutaw. Ballots have been mailed out, and you're operating with it. We're all operating at difficult times, but the situation, respectively, is this is uncalled for in this short time. How do you expect public to comment on this thing fairly, responsibly, or note the state law, not the open means law, which the attorney keeps on ignoring, that a reasonable opportunity to be heard? This is not giving that fair chance, and you're going in the situation, and I know it's complicated, but how are you gonna, how are you gonna be able to explain this fairly, fairly to the public, that you didn't give them a chance to speak on this item? I made a particular point today to be here when I saw this happen, but as you know, I'm a standard at your meetings. But 9:00 in the morning, you expect the public to be able to address this issue? And you should have, also, respectively, before you introduced this thing, before you had any public comment, even on introductions, there should have been an explanation on this, not just a written document on this thing, to discuss this scenario, but the meeting schedule, this is just an introduction, to have a public hearing on Monday, when your normal meetings are on Tuesday. So with all due respect, this is not right. And then with time left, 33 seconds, I remind you, tonight, there's a school board meeting, where the action items deal with the union contract. Now, that agenda, the school board has published in a newspaper on Friday for the meeting on the 21st, represents the meeting of October 7th. That's how the public is being noticed. A important issue is such as the contract and action item, their published ad in the frontiersman was published Friday, representing the agenda for October 7th. And this is an action item ad that we're talking about. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. It doesn't look like there's anyone else to do audience participation, so I'm gonna close out audience participation at this point in time. We don't have telephonic. I'd like the Assembly to, Mr. McKee is not here yet, too. If it's okay to switch to that item, Agenda Item 8, and take care of that before we go to candidate interviews. Mr. McKee, any objection to that? Okay, let's go to introductions. Madam Clerk, please read the introduction of the record.
Introduction for public hearing on October 26th is Ordinance 20098.
Assemblymember Mayfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to introduce legislation as ready to the record by the clerk to accept the public hearing for October 26th.
Okay, any objection? See, in hearing, no objection. That legislation is gonna do for public hearing on October 26th. Now, Madam Clerk, how is it going to work? Should we wait a few minutes for Mr. McKee, or should we just go?
Well, I can sort of go over things, I guess. I don't know. He said he was gonna be a little late. I don't know how that, what that means.
Sonia, could you try to get a hold of someone with McKee, please, and see if he's on the way?
So what I figured I would do at the start of each introduction is welcome the candidate, of course, and then introduce the Assembly before we go into questions, considering the mayor, so it can be a little bit, it can feel a little bit more at home. And then behind, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna...
Okay. Behind each candidate, and mind you, they're not in order in the book as they are at the interview, so keep that in mind. So behind each candidate, behind their application, is the questions that we're gonna be asking, which are last two pages, and then the candidate is stepping. So that's where you can break down your thoughts as we're going through it. So if you look behind each candidate, you'll see that. You have phone for each candidate.
Okay. Okay, what is, does somebody wanna go forward without Mr. McKee, or should we just wait a few minutes?
Well, we don't have, the interview doesn't start until 9:30, so we have a little bit of time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go off record. It's about 9:10. We'll go back on record about 9:25.
We're recessing, okay.
Recessing, okay.
It's not recording. Brenda, just stepping, sorry, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Okay, we're back on the record. It's 9:25 PM, Bob. Mr. Sumner arrived at our meeting at 9:04 AM. We're gonna start interviews with our candidates in a few minutes. Madam Clerk is gonna be asking the interview questions. We're gonna allow follow-up questions from Assemblymembers, and just don't dominate the follow-up questions. Make sure everybody has a chance and to ask follow-up questions. In your book, behind each candidate, our interview questions that we already stopped on the candidate assessment, so in a few minutes, we'll bring our first candidate. And our first candidate is who?
It is Travis Mortimer, Mr. Mayor. And you do have a list in your book of when the candidates are, but we have Travis Mortimer, Michael Brown, Randy Robertson, Thomas Hudka, and Jeanette Powers.
So it's Mortimer, Brown...
Robertson, Hudka, Powers.
Powers is fifth, okay. Very good. Assemblymembers have any questions or ideas before we start? Let's do it.
I'm the Mattsu Borough Clerk, so I'm gonna be asking the questions of you today. The Assembly may have some follow-up questions, but before we get started, thank you for being here, and I'm gonna introduce the mayor and Assembly to you. We've got Mayor Vern Halter.
Good morning.
We got Assemblymember Dan Mayfield.
Good morning.
Assemblymember Tamboby.
Oh.
Assemblymember Jesse Sumner. And then we've got Assemblymember Ted Leonard. And then we've got Assemblymember Stephanie Nowers.
Good morning.
Tim Hale. We are missing Assemblymember George McKee, who I believe will be joining us any moment now.
Okay, great.
So we're gonna start out with the questions. Are you ready for us?
Yeah, absolutely, I am.
Okay. Describe the most challenging management situation you ever experienced, and how did you strive to resolve the challenge? What was the outcome? And if you could revisit the situation, would you have done anything differently?
Okay, well, that's a great question. Let's see, most, I think everything is a management or leadership challenge, for the most part, especially nowadays. But I guess what comes to mind is this occasion that I had with a, in the Navy, as a Civil Engineer Corps officer, I would transfer every two and a half to three years from one base to another. And the, you know, the reality is, the job of Public Works Director or Public Works Officer from one Navy base to another base, pretty much, it's cut and paste. But what makes it different is usually the local landscape, and of course, the local staff, and you know, the team that you dropped into. And there was this one occasion where I was the new Public Works Director at a small Navy base at the top of a mountain in West Virginia. And my deputy was a long-serving civilian, you know, civilian civil service employee. The truth is, he started out with the base as an electrician, and worked his way up through the ranks, and he became the Deputy Director of the department. So he had a tremendous amount of corporate knowledge, a lot of historical knowledge in his head. He knew, and the electrical grid was critical for this base that we were at. So that was one of my critical systems that I had to maintain, was this electrical distribution system. Well, my challenge was that this man, his name, Mr. Smith, he was my deputy, he was a huge liability, in that he was very gruff and very short. He wasn't, I'll just say, he wasn't very smooth at all with his handling of people, his administrative acumen, well, I wouldn't even call it acumen. His administrative capabilities were pretty rough also, but as a deputy, he was a huge liability to me for my department, because, well, I couldn't, I couldn't take vacation time from this department, because it was literally the kind of thing that when I would take vacation time, half of the department would take vacation also, because they didn't want to be there under his direction. That's not an effective deputy. Well, early on, I realized, though, that this man was, again, not just a huge liability, but he really was one of my greatest assets in being, you know, with his corporate knowledge, his technical ability, and I needed him to, basically, I just needed to transform him. But he was a pretty, you know, a guy set in his ways. He'd done, he'd done things his way for a long time, and he wasn't really, he wasn't a very suggestible gentleman. But as far as the challenge goes, what I did was, I decided immediately, rather than trying to get him on a performance improvement program, you know, a PIP is usually a quick indicator to somebody that, hey, I've got my eye on you, and I'm trying to ride you out of here. Instead, what I did, and the gentleman, he was, you know, 63, 64 years old. I was a young lieutenant. I was probably, I don't know, 32, I don't know, but he, you know, I decided I was gonna mentor him, and basically, try to get him to, you know, I mean, my approach was, you know, hey, you are going at this from the blue-collar perspective, and with some employees, some employees need to be, you have to be abrupt, and some employees, you have to, you know, get right in your face and address an issue directly. There's a time and a place for that. But what I, you know, just man-to-man, talking with them, I shared with them that, listen, I need you to be an officer. I don't need you to be a crusty old chief. We have enough crusty old chief petty officers. I don't, I need, I need you to be a member of the wardroom. I need you to be an officer in this situation, so let's work together to knock off some of these barnacles and kind of smooth some of these edges off of him. And the truth is, you know, at first, I thought it was, well, it was, it was a kind of a difficult situation to, you know, to approach that, but my own style is, as you could probably tell, I mean, I think I'm just a tell-it-like-it-is kind of guy. Let's get to the point of what we're here to talk about. But what I did was, I handled him with dignity and respect, and with, you know, with the respect that was due to him as a deputy and as a man, and, you know, also shared directly what my intent was and the reasonings. And so instead of going straight for a PIP and putting him on report, I kind of approached him as, hey, I wanna, I wanna make you, you know, I wanna, I wanna polish you up so that you can run this department just like if I'm here. It doesn't have to be, you know, this, I would call it trauma for the department. So, you know, the challenge there was, it was a personnel issue, but, you know, I think the real, what made me grow a lot from that was realizing that I had a talent to be able to talk to him directly, and I think authentically, sincerely, and we went through this together. And there were, there were times at first when I told him, you know, behavior that you're doing is not acceptable. And he, you know, he was, what? I never do that. And so basically, I had the opportunity a couple times, you know, during meetings, when he might blow his stack, I could say, Jay, you're doing it now. And he would immediately regroup, and, you know, but it was very effective, and like I said, I learned a lot from that, and I think both of us grew in that. Now, your question had, I think, two more, two more parts. Did I, did I get your sub, like your section C and D of your question there?
If you could revisit the situation, would you do anything differently?
No, you know, I wouldn't. I wouldn't really do it differently, and the truth of the matter is, with as weird as it sounds, I had that same type of situation occur at another duty station six or eight years later. You know, it was, it's just a phenomenon, and maybe it's a public works thing, and in the Navy, you know, and just the way that we develop and promote from within, where sometimes we bring people up to an executive level who aren't, you know, quite, you know, polished up. I wouldn't change anything about the way that I've done it, and I've had the instance occur at another location where I was able to take a similar approach with pretty good, pretty good results.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is gonna be a two-part question. So I'll read it all, and if you need me to repeat it, I can do that. If you have reviewed our budget and CAFR, what is your assessment of our financial condition, and what recommendations do you have for us for improvement, and to achieve long-term fiscal sustainability without raising taxes? And tell us about your fiscal management experience, budgeting, reporting, cutting costs, building, and maintaining reserves.
Okay. So to be quite honest with you, I did not break into your CAFR. I did not, I didn't go into the budget. I really browsed more about the, because this, you know, me exploring locations is more about me convincing my family of where, you know, where we want to go. We are all in agreement, we want to get out of Florida. The heat is too much. So I didn't, I didn't spend a lot of time in the finances of the borough. But to answer your question, you know, we are, we are all in local government. It's, the story has always been, we want more than our resources allow, you know, and where I am currently is a champagne wishes on a, not even a beer budget. You know, it's a, this is, this is a very, very elderly retiree county that I'm in. It's the second oldest county in the country. And, you know, so I'm not a stranger to squeezing resources, maximizing what, you know, making the best and highest use of what we have. Some of those techniques, you know, my approach is first, to be accountable for the dollar that I have. And while ideally, you know, if it was a typical business, you want to show a return on investment. I think most people, they put a dollar in tax into the system, and they want, they want $8 or $10 worth of services and products in return for that $1. That is a very high challenge. That's a very high bar to meet, when just some of our processes and business functions within local government, they are, they're just not that efficient, and they don't always return that kind of investment. So my fiscal approach is to first demonstrate, I guess, trustworthiness, to demonstrate, you know, a responsiveness to, you know, to the resources that I do have, and then to demonstrate a stewardship. And then going forward into building new budgets, you know, I, it seems that there's, you know, there's often a budget season that I think a lot of people can kind of see, oh, it's budget season, let's start talking about this stuff. But in administration, budget season is an everyday activity. As a county manager, you know, we could approve the budget yesterday, and so today, I need to start assessing and tracking and measuring performance against expectations. So there's never, there is never a downtime or some way to relax when it comes to budgeting, because it is, it is a constant, ongoing effort. And my approach is to constantly seek feedback from stakeholders, and really try to get to the bottom, you know, are we providing the level of service that is expected? And, you know, is our financial model, is it a cost recovery model? Or is this an invest and try to pour money into something, or what are our, you know, our, we'd call it a pet project, but you know, what are, what are the things that we're trying to demonstrate by investing in? I got a little off track. What was, I'm sorry, the last part of your question? About my style, or what is my approach? My approach really is to, again, measure level of service expectations, and I, as an engineer, I naturally lean towards trying to provide a menu of options for decision-makers to show you, here's, you know, not to call it a, you know, a gold, silver, and bronze package, but to provide, you know, a level of service expectations, and then to be able to articulate, here's what you should expect to, you know, to pay for, say, twice a week garbage collection versus once a week garbage collection. Or if we were talking the same thing with library programming, or human services, you know, exposure, outreach, whatever the programming is, we're trying to measure.
So you might have covered some of this, but I'm gonna read the last part for you again. Tell us about your fiscal management experience, budgeting, reporting, cutting costs, building, and maintaining reserves. Did you want to add anything to that?
Well, I would say, as far as my experience goes, boy, I've got, most of my experience is in, is in developing capital construction budgets. And, you know, as an engineer and managing construction activities, infrastructure strategies, you know, we're talking, I added it up recently, I've, I have been responsible for, so I have managed more than $1 billion in federally funded construction over my career. And so there's, you know, there's a lot, I mean, there are a lot of things to assume in that, because there's a lot of compliance and accountability in executing federal construction dollars. But as far as building a budget and being accountable to a budget, that's, that's the world I have lived in for 25 years, was being accountable to it. So of course, I build my budgets realistically, and, you know, always being conscious of the resource availability, willingness to pay, and all the other factors that really go into developing a budget. Yes, sir. I see a question.
No, I can wait until you ask the last part.
The next part is, what is your philosophy when faced with a budget shortfall?
Well, my philosophy is, hey, let's figure this out. I have a can-do attitude. Again, you know, I feel strongly that government is there to serve the needs of our citizens, and, you know, normally, I start, the honest truth is, I start with, let's go look at the books and see what the shortfall is. And some, I've caught or found, you know, what we thought were shortfalls, I have discovered them in, and been able to relieve the pressure or the anxiety of a shortfall by identifying the type of money, or if it's a cash flow issue, you know, and you, but to understand, you really have to understand the budget, what your funding sources are, and the timing of those payments or those expenditures, and your revenues. So there's a lot more to it than just dollars in and dollars out. There's timing. There are a lot of, I guess, not a lot, there are several variables that go into that. And I think I'm pretty creative at figuring out how to, how to make sure we provide all of the essential services and functions, and then where needed, if there's a consensus from it, you know, we can develop a consensus as to where do we cut. My, you know, my own leadership style tends to, I want to protect, I want to protect employees, I want to protect environmental and equity, and, you know, protect the investments that we've already made in programs. I don't, as a default position, I don't just run to slash and burn. Instead, I try to find creative ways to manage. And unfortunately, I have a lot of experience in that.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yes, Mr. Mortimer. And I'm just wondering about the type of system down in Florida. Are the school districts under your purview for financing, or are they separate entity completely?
Yeah, so in Florida, the county, county government is the tax levying authority, and, you know, as, so my responsibility as the Assistant Administrator for Infrastructure, I've been responsible for the public works and the utilities, which are water and sewer. We have a publicly-owned system. Our facilities and construction management and our capital programs, and we, the county is responsible for providing facilities for all of our constitutional officers, like sheriff, and the tax collector, and the judicial system, and all of these, you know, all of the facility support. The school board is its own entirely separate system. They even have their own levying authority. So I don't, I don't, well, we work closely, because, you know, again, they're... resources are just as thin as as mine. And uh, one thing locally, what we're dealing with is uh school safety. And uh, we've, you know, I've worked with our school system and uh worked with their, that, you know, their equivalent to what I do in in administration. So their administrator for facilities, uh, you know, they they come at us all the time thinking we just have extra money to give them. And so so I so 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 I work with uh with that gentleman in his office to try to help them. I think what I what I do most for them is help them articulate what it is they really need because normally they just think they need money. Um, and for instance, right now, this security uh concern, they they don't really have an idea of the fix. They have an idea of what they want it to look like for basically a one button lockdown of every school in the county, so 21 locations. They want to be able to, you know, uh, they have a uh active shooter, they want to be able to hit a button and then all the schools lock down. And then all of the cameras and communications in that school and in the vicinity of this active uh event, they want to train all the, you know, all the cameras onto whatever's going on and they want to sync that with the sheriff and with fire and EMS. These are, these are awesome ideas. Uh, and I can, I can think futuristic like that. But they don't, they don't really identify that what they just want money. So they just come saying, hey, we want 25 million bucks for this. But what my role has been has been two things. I've helped them define what it is that the requirement. And that's how I I do a lot of things based on what is the requirement? What they require is some sort of integrated technology approach. Functions and different systems. And and so I help them develop that. And then as an engineer, try to give them some, you know, realistic probable costs, estimates. And then uh, once they kind of get a reality check on things and they came back and said, and you know, I showed them, hey, you might be able to do this for $8 million and I can maybe find you a couple champions on my board to speak in favor of this as perhaps, perhaps maybe no promises, but perhaps maybe a sales tax uh project because who is going to argue with school safety? Uh, you know, so I mean, that's kind of my role in that with, you know, really staying out of the politics of it, but they are totally separate authorities. And uh, you have, basically, my approach is I'm a can do type of person. I try to find how can we do this? How can we serve our shared constituency? And uh, try to bring whatever is within my sphere of influence to bear. And and that is enough, uh, that is enough co-mingling with the school board for me because, boy, they they're everything they do seems to be, at least here locally, everything they do is kicking a hornet's nest. And I I have enough of those without, you know, helping them with theirs too.
So describe your management style and in and in your daily activities. How do you ensure accountability and avoiding priorities of the borough assembly falling through the cracks or otherwise being unachieved?
Okay, so my management style, uh, I think you could probably tell just from, I mean, we've been talking for 20 minutes, this is just who I am. I'm I'm this uh matter of fact, uh, direct, approachable. My my style uh tends to um, I'll say people usually share too much with me. So I as far as, you know, working with staff or with uh partners, I think what what I get is usually uh oversharing of information with me. But I am a list person and in my office, basically I have radar screens is what I think of them as. But I have a radar screen for everything from a 20 year plan, being able to zoom down into a five year and a two year budgeting window. Uh, and of course, um, something that I, you know, work through in my mind is so managerial style, I think of everything as uh, there is a critical path to how we accomplish things. We have to accomplish task A before B before C. And so I know this in my mind and I have the, I guess, one of my uh talents might be that I'm able to usually take complex issues and and I try to, I take pride in breaking them down and trying to present them in a in a single infographic or some sort of something, a document that'll stand on its own and share with everybody, here is the plan. And uh, my management style is one very much of uh, it's very much a is a style of, I like to plan the work and then I like to work the plan. Uh, especially from the administrative perspective, um, probably don't have to tell you this, but my, you know, my experience with with uh trying to uh administrate, uh, you know, four or five different departments, they all have their own business model, they have their own priorities, they have their own deliverables and timelines and uh and it is sometimes like herding cats. But uh, what I what I like to do though is very simply take and overlay all of those department plans to be able to to create, you know, some sort of administrative plan because um, I don't know, I I, my style is again, very, I'm I'm usually very in control of the details. I understand the details and the and, you know, what are what are all the the key uh activities that need to occur? And again, keeping those radar screens, they're, these things are always in my mind and they're always very present for me. How do I keep them from falling through the cracks? Oh, um, it happens sometimes, but my my routine is that, and how big, how big is the assembly? Is it nine?
We've got seven assembly members and then the mayor.
Oh, boy, that is, that is so, that is nice. That's a nice, that's, that's manageable, uh, because, you know, I can meet individually every week uh with with each member of the assembly and the mayor. Uh, and I prefer to do that because my style and handling of of items is that, you know, when when a when a an agenda item comes to comes to the public meeting, it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, uh, including staff. And I, you know, in having those regular uh, you know, frequent one-on-one meetings with each uh member of the assembly, it it allows me to the plenty of time to answer questions, make sure that the everybody has the, you know, the information that they need to to answer or to be comfortable in their uh in their uh actions at the board meeting. And uh, you know, so usually I'm very much on top of these things and the only, now when things do fall through the cracks, it usually occurs when there is some distraction that occurs. Sometimes they are uh, you know, external forces, you know, state things or natural natural disaster things. I mean, and here locally, we're somehow we're managing still, we got COVID, but it seems like we have a hurricane in our backyard every week. So those kinds of things create its own fatigue, but also provide, um, you know, those are, those are things that can allow us to drop the ball on some things. So uh, I'm familiar with that and I'm I'm cognizant of uh, uh, you know, keeping your eye on the ball and not uh getting distracted. And uh, sometimes though, and being being a, you know, a straight talker, uh, that's more than just administration's role, that's also a governing body's role to uh to remember what our, what are our uh, what are our priorities and how are we going to best use our time that we have and are we going to spend it? You know, um, I mean, things go off the rails and it's usually when, uh, at least in my experience, it has been when a when a board member is trying to second guess something that has been established, debated and accepted months ago and they didn't accept the uh, the outcome. And so they want to re-debate and we get sidetracked. So uh, I'm just saying, it's it's a, it's a team effort to keep us all on task. Um, and I'm, like I said, I've been familiar and and uh have gotten caught in some of the traps. And uh, you know, I think most of my experience comes from making mistakes and I I learn from mistakes.
So Mr. Mortimer, I just wanted to let you know, we've got a half an hour left and we've got six more questions. I just want you to keep that in mind as we proceed.
Thank you very much.
What is your experience with collective bargaining and maintaining a productive relationship with organized labor?
Okay, well, uh, you could imagine, you know, in the uh, uh, facilities and public works arenas, uh, I have, you know, I've always been uh, working with organized labor, uh, even in even in the Navy. And my experience has been, uh, it has been good when I understand the agreement. Uh, the the times that I have gotten into trouble have been when, two come to mind. One, I'm just trying to be a nice guy. I'm trying to help out something. It's like, here is something that is clearly messed up or inefficient and I can make that better like that. Well, those are the times when I usually go sideways with the union. Excuse me. Um, so again, I've had that experience. I don't, I don't let that happen to me. But when I, when I understand the the agreement, uh, I think, excuse me, I think, uh, you know, I work really well with organized labor. Locally, uh, you know, we've got a organized fire and EMS system, so our public safety is a union and uh our trades. Excuse me.
Feel free to get a drink of water.
Yeah. Um, our trades are also um represented. And again, um, you know, it you, it's, it's just another uh operating constraint, just as much as, uh, you know, a budget or a timeline, you know, a, you know, time goals. Uh, I don't, I don't see it as a problem as much as um, I think most of the time the the issues I've had have been personality issues. Uh, and since we're running short on time, I won't get into my nightmare of having the president of the of the union work for me. It was a nightmare. But uh, but uh, been, I have been involved in negotiating um collective bargaining agreements and arbitrating where it's uh, you know, part of my uh duties of my office.
So you've been before an arbitrator and have you ever been before a court?
Not a court and and uh and not an arbitrator in the sense of uh, not in a legal sense. I meant arbitration as in the typical, uh, you know, step one, step two, step three, uh, HR, you know, uh, what do you call it? I call it um, you know, the the steps for trying to handle things at the lowest level before they blow up. So uh, I, you know, I've been involved in in those kinds of things. I'm not afraid of it and uh, it's just, it's just a uh, a condition that we work under and I I have no uh passionate feelings, you know, for or against organized labor.
What do you consider to be the borough's top three opportunities and how would you capitalize on them? Conversely, what are the top three challenges and how you would advise the assembly to approach them?
Okay, well, you know, something that uh that I've really been thinking a lot about and I don't, I don't know, I'm, I feel, I feel silly even speaking with any kind of authority on any on the subject, but as you know, as far as like three top opportunities, I will start by prefacing my comments with, I only know what I, what has been put in front of me either by a chamber or an internet source, you know, so I only know what I can see from this little screen and my digging around. But I am really intrigued by the idea, by the deep port uh and the railhead, uh, that idea. I don't know where that, you know, where that development stands right now, but as a, so within civil engineering, my um, my specialty is with is with um, with waterborne freight and freight, intermodal freight systems. So, you know, most, the truth is around the, around the world, just about every uh port facility is a filthy wreck. I think that that you have the opportunity, if you're going to develop a port, you have the opportunity to develop a port using tomorrow's technology, uh, taking care of tomorrow's ecology concerns and uh, you know, the opportunity to to do it different than other places have. Um, I think that, you know, the potential is there for, I'm in a tremendously huge port facility. I don't, I don't know that the um, that there's a freight demand to, you know, it it, my my concerns are, I have, I have been part of too many, if you build it, they will come type of projects. And uh, and so, so I I maybe be a little more cautious and really, really ferreting out the demands, you know, are the commodity flows there? And then, is it in the best interest of the borough to own a rail line? Rail line, you know, it's pretty cool to own, but it's also, it's a liability, it is a burden. You have uh harsh winter conditions, you know, so locating, site selection for that rail line, unless it is pristine and not, you know, if it could be very expensive to own and maintain uh even a couple miles of rail line. So, but again, that I think is a really cool opportunity. I would love to chew on that for a little while. Um, I think other other opportunities that exist, uh, are they still doing up there? So I don't look like it right now. I used to be a marathoner and uh, so I had a 50 states, there is this thing called the 50 states marathon club. And you know, everybody, Alaska's race is the mayor's midnight marathon. Are they still doing that in Anchorage? So what is, what is the Palmer and Wasilla's, what's your, what's your get on the Airbnb from that? Because that that event alone should pull in a lot of tourism and, you know, the Airbnb part of that, there's, there's a get there. Uh, that's something that I think I would, I'd probably read up on and I would be asking questions at the, you know, the appropriate venues. Um, and then other opportunities, uh, in, you know, I apologize in all, in all honesty, I haven't gotten too deep um, in particulars, but uh, I don't know, there's probably, there's got to be a lot of opportunities. I I I feel a lot of personal opportunities uh there, but as a borough, I I see a lot of challenges as to how, you know, how you provide products and services across such a, you know, uh, wide uh geography and uh, you know, and I'm sure there's a lot of different demand signals from the population.
So if the mayor and assembly adopted a, adopted a policy or collectively expressed a stance with which you had a significant professional disagreement, how would you express that disagreement and seek resolution? And if you can cite an example in your response?
Well, there, well, I'll just say there's, I am anxious to get out of Southwest Florida just because of, you know, as a, as a, as a local government, uh, manager, as a profession, uh, we have an ethical responsibility to be apolitical. But however, there comes a point where like burnout happens if I were to, if I were to participate in something that I just am so, you know, to my core in disagreement with. So locally, I'll share with you what my, what my heartburn is locally. My house sits at eight feet above sea level. And in the state of Florida, we have, we, we, the state of Florida's official position is that sea level rise and climate change is not a real thing. We were not even allowed to put climate change in our documentation. And as an engineer, that bothers me that anything I build, now we, we do have to meet, you know, flood plains and you have, you have ecological and, and watershed responsibilities. But as a responsible adult and an inju, and a professional engineer, I find it important to, to at least, uh, create resiliency in a, in a system, not to, not to create something that I know, uh, has a likelihood of failing. So those, those kinds of things, uh, you know, I, well, they caused me, they caused me problems, uh, internally and, you know, I, I deal with it. Now, if the mayor and, and the, uh, and the assembly were to, uh, you know, dictate something, by the time it, the declaration is officially made, everybody will know my, my personal and my professional opinion on something. Uh, but my personal and professional opinion are not always the same. Uh, my personal opinion is there if you ask, what's your opinion on this? And I, the truth is I've, I've only been asked one time by a commissioner, what do you think about this? And I was forthright. Uh, she didn't like hearing what I thought about it, but I was forthright, but it's not my, it's not my, uh, you know, just because I have a seat at the table, I don't necess, I'm not, uh, there to represent myself. My role is a professional role and, uh, you know, my, my, uh, you know, by the time something were to be made official, a declaration of such, I would have come to terms with it. Now, examples of what we, where I've had that occur. Locally, uh, I had a, uh, within my sales tax portfolio, I had a, um, we have, we have a great, uh, local option sales tax here that is overperforming. And I had a, a project for a, a new human services or neighborhood services building. And, um, it was funded at about six and a half million dollars. It was adequate for, for what the scope of the project was. But early on in the, uh, in the, in the engineering and going through the site selection and basically what we were doing was taking an existing building that, uh, was functionally obsolete because of, uh, um, accessibility and fire. And there are just so many problems with the building that we had to gut it and rebuild it. So early on, uh, I went to the board and said, hey, board, listen, we, we have this project to take this really junky old building. What it was is that the, the county had a period of going around and buying a bunch of old churches. So like any church that went out of business, for some reason the county would buy it. And so I had a whole bunch of old churches that were being used as, you know, child development centers or historical places and, but basically they were just old churches that were repurposed. And with this, uh, human services project, I brought it to the board's attention. I said, listen, uh, it would not be right to put another dollar into this building because it is, it's not even wood. It's literally, it was termites holding hands. It was so bad. It was, it was so bad that, you know, the, the engineering assessment was do not put a dollar into this, you're wasting money, you need to tear it down. And let's then, thinking, you know, what is the universe of possibilities here? I came up with this idea that, hey, church, or I mean, hey, board, the church next door to this building, they just went under. Why don't we go buy that church? And then we could assemble these two parcels and have six acres and we could have a neighborhood services campus. Excuse me. So anyway, kind of, kind of, you know, turned into a different project, but what, where I ran into the challenge was, um, I had a, I had two or three, I, I had two strong yeses. So on a board of five, I had two strong yeses. I had one that would go with whatever the feel of the, you know, whatever the, the feel of was at that moment. And I had two board members that were kind of mean because they didn't believe in, in human services projects or those people type of projects. And so what it was is one of the, the time where I was asked my opinion, this one commissioner, she said, cause I was telling her just how embarrassing this building was for the programs. We were running a boys and girls club out of there and some other, you know, guardian ad litem and some other things. And she says, she asked me, and I would, I mean, I lit, almost fell out of my chair. But she says, well, what do you think about the condition of the place? And I just said, said, wow, thanks for asking, but it is embarrassing because the, the condition that this building is in, it shows how little we care about the boys and girls club and about that particular population that we're serving there. It shows we don't care. I don't know how to say that any other way. So, so I have experience in that. And, uh, again, there were, it goes, you know, and if, if it, if it's ruled against me, I'm a big boy. I, uh, I'll get over it. And how many more questions do we have still?
I think that's three.
12 minutes.
Discuss, discuss your approach to and experience with economic development and diversification of ta, of the tax base. And can you share both a success story and one, one that you didn't turn out so well, but you learned from?
Okay. Uh, so the abbreviated version is, uh, you know, economic development, I think is, I think probably one of my favorite functions of, of local government. It is, is not in necessarily picking winners and losers, but the ability to, uh, create the conditions for the market to, uh, thrive. Or, uh, for local government to be creative in a way to provide the conditions for, uh, you know, whatever it is that our imagined, imagination has, uh, you know, we have the ability to, you, you kind of have to set the stage for some of these things. Um, some examples, you know, a good example, we have locally, our economy is, is literally, uh, oh, it's, it's so, it's so one trick pony that right now we're hurting because it, locally, we have a tourism based economy. And two years ago, we had this phenomenon called red tide where the beaches were so, the, the algae blooms were so bad that you couldn't be on the beach without having reactions to this red tide in the, in the air. And, um, it, the whole state of Florida took a real hit. So we, in, in administration, we were, we were trying to find something to, uh, to diversify our local tax base. And we realized that our, our big resource that was untapped was our local, very small local airport. And it was a municipal airport. And we saw the opportunity to, uh, we've been working with and really romancing, uh, this, uh, airline called Allegiant. And they are, I mean, if you've ever flown like a, uh, an economy airline like Southwest, this is even more economy than that. But they, but they fly direct from Punagorda, they fly direct to like Cleveland and Bismarck and Buffalo and, you know, uh, Branson, Missouri. So they fly directly from here to like 35 different places in the, in the country. And, uh, what we wanted to do was not just squeeze a little more from that airport operation, but we needed, we needed a workforce development and a, uh, and also a housing, uh, affordable housing development out of this. So what we did was we, um, we romanced, uh, Western Michigan University, which just a fluke, we discovered that Western Michigan University, I don't even know where the data came from, but we discovered that Western Michigan's biggest cluster of, um, of alumni live here in Southwest Florida. So we started reaching out to Western Michigan University and saying, hey, can you come do some academic research down here? And Will, you know, we were funding them for water quality and different, uh, projects, you know, if you're just trying to throw some money at them and get them to come visit us. And it didn't take long, but they realized that Western Michigan has an aviation and a, and a pretty big pilot program of, you know, uh, uh, an aviation pilot, um, program. And when they came down here, they said, wow, the weather here is so great. I wish we could get this weather up in Michigan. And we said, well, why don't? And so we created some opportunities for the facilities to work out and to, you know, I mean, we jumped through hoops and we got Mich, Western Michigan University to come and open a, a flight training school and a, um, a, uh, mechanics, you know, an aviation mechanic, uh, school. And the hardest part though was getting the school board to, to feed into this mechanic program. Cause we're like, hey, we have a program now. Now we need people to, you know, local people, cause we have that problem where our local high schoolers graduate and then they go off to college and they never come back.
Let's jump in. Sorry.
So that was a success.
We have a few minutes left.
So you sort of went over this and during the first question, but if you can expand on it maybe a little. First, please tell us about your management style with department directors. Then please describe how your view, how you view the interaction of department heads and other staff with the assembly versus the manager's role.
Okay. Mr. McKee, uh, good, good morning. I'm Travis Mortimer. And, uh, I'm, I'm wrapping up now. So my, my leadership style with directors, uh, I, I use the metaphor of a, uh, a carrier battle group. So in the Navy, you're moving, uh, a carrier battle group across an ocean. You're going to have a carrier and you're going to have, you know, it's going to be surrounded by 20 or 30, uh, smaller diversified ships, uh, that are all, you know, in this carrier battle group, you're going to have 30 something ships all moving in the same direction, uh, under, uh, they're under a, you know, a unified vision and a, and a single command. But every one of those ships has its own specific purpose in that battle group. Uh, you know, the carrier performs one function and some, another ship out here in the battle group, they might be providing, you know, uh, air surveillance and coverage. Some others might be providing logistics. Nonetheless, they all serve their own specific purpose. They, and they, um, but they're all essential to the battle group. I see departments within a county, I mean, in a city, but the, the departments themselves as their own ship in that carrier battle group. And, um, being a naval officer, I find, you know, I know that, uh, each one of those ships that, you know, that the, the captain of an aircraft carrier, while that ship is impressive, the captain of that aircraft carrier is very, uh, well-trained and qualified to handle everything on that carrier. Just the same as, uh, you know, a destroyer or a cruiser or a, uh, a landing craft, any of these other vessels that are underway in the formation, those, those captains of, of each of those ships are very capable to manage all of the operations on their ship. Uh, and I see each of those, each, you know, the departments are the same way. They are, they are ships, uh, that have, in a lot of respect, they have a lot of sovereignty. But, but we are all collectively, we are this battle group and we are set in one direction and we have command and control and we have coordination among the things because what happens when, you know, over here on the, on the right flank, the public works department decides they're going to make a sharp left turn. While we're all in formation, they're going to mess up the formation and crash into stuff. But what is it that the public works department did? They, they said, hey, it's the day before Thanksgiving. I think I want to let all my employees go home at noon. Well, I mean, I, I like the idea, but we're not running just one ship here. We got these other 30 ships that have to, we have to coordinate these things. Right? So my approach is very much like that. I, I, um, I guess I allow a lot of, uh, autonomy from the departments. But at the same time, I need to be, uh, familiar with the, the leadership, uh, into, not just, not just from the programatics, but individually. And I like to do that from, at a personal level and to know the people. And then the role of the, of the governing body to the directors, uh, I don't know what the relationships are, uh, with the borough, but some, some localities have, uh, you know, an assembly person or a commissioner who goes direct to that, to, you know, the roads department. Or if there are already established, um, responsibilities and lines of command and control, then I'll have to learn those. But, uh, it's my preference that, uh, that I need to know everything that's, uh, being directed to the directors so I can support that. Um, and again, we're, we need to be unified in our purpose and our, and our function. So I prefer to be that, be that narrow, that narrow spot in the hourglass, but I can't always be.
We have, Mr. Leonard has a follow-up question, Mr. Mortimer.
The follow-up on that, Mr. Mortimer. How do you handle a relationship or an issue with assembly member if they go to your director and say, I want you to do this?
Well, locally where I'm at now, I have a charter that clearly spells out what the roles of the board, the county commission is, the role of the administrator. And there's a, there's specifically locally, I have, there's an anti or a, uh, uh, you know, a do not interfere clause in, in, you know, locally. So there, but that's, but that's the, that's the locals layout, you know? And there, and it's there for necessity because, um, you know, every, I think everybody has good intentions, but there's a reason that these systems are set up like this. For instance, I have a commissioner right now who, his intentions are great, but, but his approach to, to project management, it's actually starting to become offensive because he feels that he could manage, uh, a construction, you know, a road project better than the project managers who are on the site. And it's the reason, the reason is there's a road being built right near his office. And he's a plastic surgeon and he looks out his office window and sees the county has moved, this pile of dirt has moved three times today. And there's a, there's a backhoe sitting on that project that hasn't moved in a month. And so he feels, I mean, he's well-intentioned. He feels that he could do a better job. I mean, he, he goes down there on the job site and I've had to correct him because his because his presence on a job site can cost the county a lot of money. If he, if he gives direction, there is, uh, there is inferred authority there when it comes to contracts. And so it just creates unnecessary conflict. But those are the things, that's why you have a manager to, um, to work those things out.
Well, Mr. Mortimer, we really appreciate your time and we're, I'm a little jealous that you're in Florida and I'm up here right now with the good weather, but we, we do appreciate your time.
It was twenty degrees at my place this morning, uh, Mr. Mortimer.
Really? Baron heist?
Thank you very much. You're our first interviewer and a great job. Appreciate it.
Uh, well, thank you, and I hope to, uh, be talking with you again soon.
Have a great day.
Thanks. Bye now.
Did you get your long calls?
No.
No, they're still doing, uh,
Good. How are you?
I'm doing well.
I mean, if you can give us just one second, I'm waiting for Assemblymember Nowers to come back and then we'll be ready to go.
Sure thing.
But just to give you an idea also, we've got eight questions to ask. We've got you for an hour. So keep that in mind. Once you see me stand up, it pretty much means we need to move on to the next question. That helps you.
Okay.
So I'm going to start the introduction. Some of the assembly members you do know. I know you know Mayor Vern Halter.
Good morning.
We've got Assemblymember Dan Mayfield, Assemblymember Tam Bovee, Assemblymember Jesse Sumner, Assemblymember George McKee, Assemblymember Ted Leonard, Assemblymember Stephanie Nowers, and then Assemblymember Tom Hill. Well, we appreciate you being here with us today and I'm going to be the one asking the questions of you. So I'm going to start off with the first question.
Very good.
Describe the most challenging management situation you have experienced and how did you strive to resolve the challenge? What was the outcome? And if you could revisit it, what would you do differently?
Yeah, I guess I'll, well, I mean, it's, I might as well. I'll use the, uh, Matsueboro example when I stepped into Capital Projects. That certainly was one of the more challenging situations. It's more probably pretty relatable for this group. Um, and it's probably pretty relevant to this discussion today. Uh, but when I inherited that role, uh, was hired on to be the Capital Projects Director at the Borough, uh, it was a new, it was a new department. Um, so it was a split off of, uh, Public Works. There was a ton of work, roads and schools, fire stations, libraries. There was a, a large amount of work on the plate at the time. Some of the work, particularly for roads, had somewhat stalled, I guess, or maybe hadn't, uh, progressed at the pace that at that time, the assembly felt that it should have, or that the manager felt that it should have. Um, and it was just an interesting situation. Uh, you had this split off group of a, of a department, um, these challenging projects. Um, and we had to figure out basically how to create a team and get these projects moving quickly. Uh, there was a great deal of interest in seeing construction, obviously a lot of construction up here in, in Alaska seasonal. So you have to take advantage of those windows when they're available. So, uh, that was probably the most challenging situation. Or one of the more challenging situations I've, uh, faced because we had a short period of time, uh, to produce results.
Is there anything you would have done differently that you can look back now on that you might have decided you could have done it a different way?
Um, I don't know that there was anything. I mean, there were a lot of, uh, factors, variables in the environment. So it was difficult to just, to kind of look back and say, well, I could have done it differently. I think I'm, I'm pretty pleased with the results we had. There certainly were instances in specific projects where you'd be like, well, you know, after you see it, you're like, well, we would have, could have done this a little bit differently and maybe gotten a, a different result, not necessarily a better result, but could have gotten a different one. Um, so I don't think anything fundamentally, when it came to building the team, I would probably, uh, do differently. We had some pretty, um, well-defined timelines that were handed, uh, to me, uh, to produce. So we had to operate within those constraints.
And this is a two-part question. So if you need me to repeat part of it later on, let me know. If you have reviewed our budget and CAFR, what is your assessment of our financial condition and what recommendations do you have for us for improvement and to achieve long-term fiscal sustainability without raising taxes? And tell us about your fiscal management experience, budgeting, reporting, cutting costs, building and maintaining reserves.
Okay. I'm just taking a couple notes. So I have had the opportunity to look through some of the, uh, materials that are on the Borough website. Actually, I, I mean, I've been a resident here for quite a while and had some experience over there at the Borough and even over here at the Matsueboro School District. Yeah, I mean, obviously my, I think it's probably fairly, fairly obvious to most residents out here that my main concern is really our reliance on state funding. Um, and then just the state's fiscal situation and what that means to us. Um, I have looked through, I thought, uh, one of the documents, the, uh, Citizen Financial Report, uh, that's available is a really nice overview of the Borough's budget. I mean, obviously the CAFR is very detailed, but it's also very, uh, difficult for your average person to understand or really make heads or tails out of. I appreciate the thought that goes into that and the, the fact that it's all audited and, and that you have a third-party professional come in and do that work. Uh, but I think that Citizen Financial Report was probably the, the most helpful. Um, and it looked like overall long-term sustainability, we are in reasonably good shape. Obviously there's some concerns with the state funding. Uh, school bond debt reimbursement, uh, from the state's going to be a challenge because that could definitely eat into operating funds and could create some problems for us there, either in terms of cuts or in need for additional revenue. Uh, but I think all in all, it looked, it looks pretty good overall. Um, and I reviewed the capital assets and, and our spending reserves and where we've been over the past, uh, several years. And, and I don't have anything uh, that's of a major concern outside of those areas that I've already mentioned. Uh, and as far as fiscal management experience, I mean, I, I've been operating in the local government now for about seven years. Prior to that, I had, uh, federal government experience. So I understand fiscal years, that calendar, budget development, uh, what documents, the need for transparency. Um, I, it, it is of interest that you would ask the question about the CAFR and whatnot. I do think we spend a lot of time on the front end talking about budgets and, and what's going to be allocated. Uh, but I think of what, for me at least, is what's of particular interest is on the backside of that in terms of how we spend the money and what outcomes we get to that. I think that's a interesting challenge where you look at not only what we spend, but how we spend it, and then actually be able to tie that back to specific outcomes or results. Uh, I think that can become very difficult when you have large budgets, um, and you're providing a pretty broad set of services.
Assemblymember Leonard has a question for you, Mr. Brown.
Yes, Mr. Brown. It's nice to meet you. Interesting, you would be in an interesting situation if you had this position because you will be having to work with the school district. As you stated, we know there could be a, over a nine million dollar shortfall between the school district and the Borough. And I'm wondering how you would work with those two organizations because we're all, you know, we oversee the funding for the school district. Obviously we don't direct the school district, but we oversee the funding. So you're going to be working from a different side with that type of funding. I wonder how you would work with that and do you see if there's any ways for more efficiencies? Now that you've been on both sides of the school district and how we could utilize resources.
Sure. Happy to take your question. Uh, I was, you know, I was encouraged when the mayor talked about the joint committee to kind of revisit, um, funding that comes through from the local appropriation for the school district. Um, I think the first thing with addressing any problem is just understanding the problem. Uh, so I do think that's one of the benefits or the perspectives that I bring to the table is I've now operated on a daily basis in both organizations. So I have a pretty good understanding, I think, of, uh, what it takes to run each organization or, or how that funding is utilized. So I think from the ability to understand the problem or the scope of the problem, I think that's actually a benefit. And I have relationships on both sides of the house. So, uh, I think in the end, it's going to come down to communication and being able to understand from each perspective, what the funding is needed for, what the priorities are and where we can find some efficiencies. I know in the past, uh, Assemblymember McKee's brought up, uh, shared services. I think there are some opportunities potentially there. Uh, I don't think it's as clean or easy as one might think. Uh, but I do think there may be some opportunities where we're going to have to go back and revisit those things and try to find some efficiencies that maybe, uh, we hadn't looked at hard enough in the past.
What is your philosophy when faced with a budget shortfall?
Um, yeah, I think I talked a little bit about that in one of my written questions. Um, well, like I talked about with problems, you got to understand it. So I think if I were to come in there and, and were faced with a budget deficit or a shortfall, obviously I would want to meet with the directors and understand the services that they provide. I have some knowledge of, you know, various departments that, that are, uh, with the Borough already. Uh, but I would want to dive in and, and kind of understand where does that funding go and what services, uh, does it provide? I mean, because we can look at, I mean, I'm open to looking certainly for structural changes, but I think ultimately you've got to be able to tie what you're doing today, the structure that you have to the services that you're providing to the community. So, because clearly if you're going to make structural changes, it's probably going to change the set of services that you're able to offer the community. Uh, and being able to talk through that, um, with various stakeholders, I think would be critical. So that folks can help you understand what it is their priorities are in terms of what services they, uh, want and what services they could potentially live without.
Describe your management style and your daily activities. How do you ensure accountability and avoiding priorities of the assembly from falling through the cracks or otherwise being unachieved?
Yeah. So I see the, um, manager as that liaison between the assembly and, and staff. So there is that day-to-day operations that the manager is responsible for. And I think that's all guided by the priorities of the assembly. So the manager's job is to take those priorities and make sure they get incorporated into the daily business, uh, of the Borough. Um, and I think communication, just making sure that, uh, individual assembly member needs or, or districts' needs or desires um, are, are communicated out and that, that the Borough staff and the manager are responsive to those requests. As far as philosophy, I mean, when it comes to leadership philosophy and, and kind of my management style, and, and I'm, I'm a believer in processes and frameworks. I think they're great guides. I wouldn't say I've adopted the servant leadership model, like I went out, saw it, said, that's what I want to be. But I think over the years, uh, having worked probably predominantly in the military is kind of that foundation, uh, really does lend itself more to that. By that, I mean, it is people first. I'm a believer in teamwork, not because I learned it in a class somewhere or that somebody taught me that it was a good idea, but because I've seen it work. And I've seen how much more you can accomplish when you can effectively build teams, um, and get people aligned to work together toward a common goal. Um, so I am a believer in that and the morale and the culture associated with that. I am a results-based person. So I don't think you get an A for effort. Effort's great, uh, but ultimately it is about producing results. I mean, so when it, when you talk about accountability, at some point you got to come back and say, did we accomplish or achieve what we set out to do? And if not, somebody's got to be responsible for that. And whoever that leader is of that team, or in this case, maybe the Borough manager, uh, ultimately that's got to, that's got to come back to that person. Yeah, I think I'll, that's probably good enough. I don't want to, to overdo it.
What is your experience with collective bargaining and maintaining productive relationships with organized labor?
Yeah. So, um, as far as collective bargaining goes, I mean, I, I've not been on the negotiating, negotiations team directly either at the Borough or at the school district. Obviously when I was in the military, we didn't, uh, we didn't have collective bargaining. Um, that was not something that you do in the U.S. military. Um, but I have seen it work and I have seen, um, how you strategize and, and come up with, uh, and really kind of, uh, massage the process. Uh, but ultimately I think you said it in the question, it comes down to relationships and ultimately some trust. I mean, there are many situations I've seen here at the school district and even at the Borough is, you know, when you're relying on set funding, whether it's from an outside organization like the state where you really don't control the appropriation, or whether it's something that's, you know, partly based on internal revenue, there are constraints. So we don't just have the ability necessarily to offer contracts, uh, to folks based on, on maybe what we would like it to be, or what the labor union would like it to be, that we have to operate within the environment that we have. And those, those limitations are very real. Um, so I think you just, you work through that and you, you look to do the best you can by the organization as a whole first and the folks that are in it.
So even though you haven't been part of the collective, collective bargaining itself, have you ever been before a labor arbitrator or court regarding labor issues?
I have not.
What do you consider to be the Borough's top three opportunities and how would you capitalize on them? And conversely, what are the top three challenges and how would you advise the assembly to approach them?
Okay. Just taking a couple notes here. That's, well, I think one of the opportunities, I mean, I, I kind of look at, uh, where we are now with, um, the state funding. I look, that's one of our, a potential opportunity. I know I see challenges as opportunities, even looking at the current pandemic with COVID-19. It, it certainly, uh, and even with the state funding, those two challenges would allow you to step back and really reevaluate how we do things. Um, sometimes, uh, it may take that for a government organization or really any organization to step back and reevaluate some things that have been hard and fast for years. And I think things like a pandemic or thing, challenges like state funding do, do allow you to have to step, or give you the opportunity to step back um, and look at how you might choose to do things differently because to some degree you're almost forced to. Um, so those two challenges with state funding, I think the pandemic, uh, has obviously put some stress on the residents of the Borough. We're seeing it on a daily basis in schools currently, um, and those challenges, but I think those create opportunities for us. So, uh, those are two that come to mind right away. And I think another one would be just, I, I guess, I'm a proponent of infrastructure. So when I, when I consider, uh, some of the things that government does in, in those areas, whether it be, you know, public safety, public education or transportation, those three come to mind is, you know, it is, it, it, there is a, a great deal of that that falls on the shoulders of the Borough and on the local government. So I think figuring out how we can do capital funding to continue to develop infrastructure, not just maintain what we have, uh, is going to be critical moving forward, particularly if we're going to continue to grow. Um, so I see those as opportunities. I know when you, when you see a challenge as an opportunity, it kind of tends to link those two. Uh, but clearly on the challenges side, uh, the state funding piece would probably, uh, be one of the, the, the more prominent ones. Uh, and like I said, with infrastructure, I, there are some, uh, interesting challenges out there about how we, like I think about like the Septage and Lichate, Lichate facility or something like that, where you consider a Borough of our size and our growth and our reliance on Anchorage as, and then the municipality to, to manage that situation. So I think things like that, we've still got the port in play, uh, of course, and the Port Mac rail extension. I think those are, are some amazing opportunities in the future, but they're also challenges because the state funding support for those But they're also challenges because the state funding support for those has pretty much dried up. So I think those are some ones that come right to mind that probably a little bit more infrastructure-centric, but I think are interesting prospects for opportunity and challenges that we have moving forward.
Mayor Halter has a question for you, Mr. Brown.
Well, I think you just partially answered it. I was going to ask you, do you see Port McKenzie as an opportunity or a challenge?
I think it's a little bit of both. I mean, when you're not bringing in a lot of revenue, it's kind of tough to maintain what you have. So I think without a revenue stream there, it makes it tough to keep up with the maintenance of the port itself. But it's absolutely an opportunity. I mean, when you look at what that brings versus the Port of Anchorage, I think it clearly gives us an edge as a borough that is something that the muni would not be able to provide the state of Alaska.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if the mayor and assembly adopted a policy or collectively expressed a stance with which you had significant professional disagreement, how would you express that disagreement and seek resolution? And can you cite an example in your response?
Yeah, I'll see if I can think of a specific example as I'm talking. But I appreciate the system of government that we have. I would be an appointed official, not an elected official. So the desire of that collective body of elected officials, that's what we end up doing. My job, if I were the manager, is to carry that out. I'm certainly comfortable with expressing disagreement, but it needs to be done tactfully, respectfully. And it also, at times, will need to be done one-on-one and in private, not necessarily in a public setting. But I have no problem having those conversations. I think a lot of that depends on just developing good relationships so that there can be candor and that those things can be shared without it being disrespectful. But ultimately, I believe what the elected, that's what the folks, our voters, our citizens, elected you all to do is to carry that out. And ultimately, you are their representative. So, and my job is to work for you. So I'm accustomed to, I guess, for lack of a better term, a chain of command. So I can understand and appreciate how that works. I don't always have to agree with the direction, but I am comfortable being able to share that perspective if that situation were to arise. I can think of multiple instances in the military where we may have set out to go in a specific direction. But, you know, and I would voice those concerns with my supervisor or commander. But that didn't necessarily mean that the direction would change. So I can't think of a specific incident that I would highlight because some of those things where you have that disagreement, you wouldn't necessarily want to put on public record. So I'm going to refrain from offering a specific example, I guess.
Discuss your approach to and discuss your approach to and experience with economic development and diversification of the tax base. And can you share both successfully in a project that did not turn out as well and what you learned from it?
Okay, so for economic development, I would be the first one to admit that's probably an area where I would seek additional support and advice. It's not something I have a lot of direct experience with in a local government setting. I think that was, there was a question similar to that, and I was pretty forthcoming about that because, I mean, for me to sit here and say, "I'm the perfect candidate and I can do everything you want to do," is probably not terribly realistic. But what I recognize is where I would need that additional support, there are ways to get that, whether it's consultants or contractors or whatnot. There are ways, depending on how the assembly sees the borough's role in economic development, that might require some additional support. I've seen that from my days with the borough a few years ago, where I've seen that kind of ebb and flow a little bit in terms of what others may have seen as the borough's role in that. As far as a specific project, are you asking in terms of economic development or are you just talking in general?
If you don't have an economic development one, you can talk in general.
Okay. I'm trying to think of a specific project.
I have a question, Mr. Brown, on diversification of tax base.
Okay.
Several years ago, the school board sent a resolution over to the assembly and the mayor's office recommending a sales tax specifically for the funding to go to schools. It didn't make it out of the assembly, it didn't even go to the ballot. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I guess.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, yeah, I've given that some thought. I mean, generally speaking, I guess, more philosophically, I suppose, I do like the idea of a diversification in the sense of not having all of our eggs in one basket. I can see a challenge with that. I'm a property owner out here, so I can also appreciate having that burden, if you will, all on a single group of taxpayers. But I can also appreciate the challenges that creates for the cities where they already have an existing sales tax and how that could potentially disadvantage us when compared to, say, Anchorage, for example. So I think, yeah, there are clearly some challenges and it's not clear-cut. But I think, you know, when you think about even just the state's coffers and our reliance on state funding, that illustrates perfectly the challenge of having reliance on any one funding stream. But I can also see the other side of that where the more you diversify potentially, the more government's going to grow and expand, and that's not necessarily desirable either.
First, please tell us about your management style with department directors. Then please describe how you view interaction of department heads and other staff with the assembly versus the manager's role.
Okay, I would say, if I were to sum it up one word, I would say it would be collaborative. Again, I believe in teamwork. So you've got to have folks that can run those departments on a daily basis that are competent and that you can trust. It is kind of interesting, you know, being in two local government organizations out here in terms of communications as a director or as an executive director with the elected body. I've seen it done differently under different managers or under a different manager and superintendent. And I personally believe, I think, that the department director should have the ability to communicate directly with assembly members. As the manager, I would want to be informed on that so that I can keep track. But I think to try to limit that, to have to have everything go directly through the manager, isn't necessarily the most efficient way to get it done. And I think if you trust those folks to do what you've hired them to do, they should be able to do that in their role as a director or as a department director.
Assemblymember Leonard has a question for you, Mr. Brown.
And probably Mr. Brown, you've faced this situation before, but I've asked the other candidate. Is how do you approach an assembly member if they sort of cross the line from policy to directing, saying, "I need and I want this done now"? And sort of undercutting your authority in a way. How would you approach that, assembly member, or how would you work through that situation?
Yeah, I can think of a couple of instances as a department director, but I'm not going to mention specific names. But yeah, that challenge comes up and where I've worked with assembly members that maybe were a little bit outside of their lane on what they were asking for. These were project-related needs. So my strategy was just to engage with them directly. I met with them, I would discuss with them, I would provide answers to any question that they had. I don't, I won't avoid that. I guess when it comes to conflict or the potential for conflict avoidance is, in my opinion, generally not a great strategy. So typically, we'll just engage and try to work through the problem. And I think in those couple of instances that I can think of, we were able to pretty much meet the needs of those assembly members. Obviously, we operate, like especially with project budgets and like we talked about earlier with operating budgets, there are constraints. So where those limitations or constraints are, I think it's important that those things get communicated well and in advance so folks understand the environment that you're in. I mean, it's not reasonable to think you're going to be able to accomplish everything all the time. But if that's the case, it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone.
I've got a follow-up, Mr. Brown. The converse of that, what do your directors kind of goes around to assembly members to, I don't know, change policy or to do something? And what do you think of that situation? How would you handle it?
I think coming in, I would have very clear expectations and what that would look like if those weren't met. I mean, the reality is, there's got to be trust and confidence if it's going to work between the manager and department directors. And I think if I came in and as the manager, it's kind of, it's kind of up to me to put, to put, you know, my, take the first step, if you will, and kind of make that clear, like, "How do I expect this to operate? And what should that look like?" Yeah, loyalty is important. And by that, I mean just not doing anything underhanded behind someone's back that it just needs to be forthright. We need to share in the communication that I, I think it's okay. Disagreement's okay. Like, I don't mind if the department director has a different opinion than I do. We just need to talk through it. And ultimately, at some point, a decision's going to be made. And once that decision's made, we've got to move forward with that. We can't have undercutting once that occurs because that's not going to, that's not going to help out anyone.
So with a highly experienced senior staff, I'm sorry, did you have, oh, sorry, Assemblymember Nowers.
Thank you. And Mr. Brown, nice to meet you as well. I don't think we've had a chance to meet. This is kind of a broad question, but you mentioned outcomes and results and having measurable results. And I, so it's kind of a two-part. One is, if you could give an example of, you know, how you set outcomes and measured them. And then the second part of it is, some things lend themselves to results measurement better than others, like a capital project, you know, "I got it done on time and under budget." We deal with a whole range of things, quality of life, conflicts caused by the growth. If you have any thoughts on how you would help set kind of a goal for dealing with those things, how you would go about helping the assembly measure and track how we're doing on things like that?
Sure, I'll start with the first in terms of, I guess I would argue this. I think you can measure anything. There's actually a book on the shelf behind me that's titled something along those lines. Because I've looked at that in a number of different ways. Because clearly, there are objective metrics that are very hard and fast. Like, for example, in a construction project, you know, if you're going to hit your goals for, you know, your time, scope, budget. I mean, those things are very easy to measure. But you're right, in terms of quality of life and some of the other things, there's often a lot of subjective assessments where, but I think you can come up with ways where you weave those two together and where you have the opportunity, where you have those hard and fast kind of criteria or easy to manage or measure things. But then you come up with ways where you can also do some subjective assessments. I think that's, you know, we've done that in a number of ways, like around surveys and some of the other things that we've done over here even in my present role, where you try to get a sense from the community for how they view what is happening and how well it's happening. So I think there are opportunities for doing that, that are subjective. But don't, I guess they're just not as clear. They're not as simple or as easy. So oftentimes, it takes a little bit more work to figure out how you're, not only how you're going to measure, but how are you going to solicit the input to feed that process?
Thank you.
With a highly experienced senior staff, how would you evaluate your abilities and establish your management approach?
How would I evaluate my abilities for highly, or for senior staff? Yeah, you know, I was kind of thinking about this leading up to this position. And I think overall, when I consider my career as a whole, whether it's been in local government or military, it's always been progressing or progressive, like it's always been a building up. So I think at this point in my career, I'm at a stage where I've had a lot of opportunities to lead. I mean, I've been doing this leadership, if you will. And admittedly, at first, it was in smaller team settings. But now, for probably 25, 30 years, almost 30 years. So I've had an opportunity in different settings. And I think one of the things that's been very beneficial to me with a military background, and I don't mean to say, you know, you got to have, you got to be a military to have great leadership because I don't believe that. But one of the things the military offers, it's very good in developing leaders, is just a dynamic environment. You get thrown into some very intense, at times, settings that will require you to really learn to lead and to be able to adapt and be flexible. And I think those things really help to accelerate growth in terms of leadership. So I feel like I'm at a really good spot in terms of my ability to be able to manage that and also just maintain relationships with folks that have a lot of experience and are valued and have probably done a lot of things that I've done already. So I don't see it as, I don't ever really see it as somebody working for me. It's just, that's just not how I look at it. It really is more collaborative and how do we work together to get to the same outcome? The difference is, we have different roles.
Mr. Brown, this is the mayor, you know, you were talking about your military leadership. And it's, you know, we have several directors over here that have military experience, officer experience. Did your former military relationship with that, I guess, make you more prevalent to trust them over, say, a different director? What are your thoughts on that?
No, I don't think it, I don't think it leads to me having more trust in them. I think what it helps in is because of similar backgrounds, we speak the same language a little bit more, if you will. Or, for example, like I can go into a setting with, like I have a director over here that's a military veteran, and I can say a word or phrase because we both have an Army background. And he understands exactly what I'm trying to articulate. And instead of having to explain it in, you know, verbally, I can say a couple of words and he knows exactly what I'm talking about. So I think there are some benefits from that perspective where you just get the benefit of speaking kind of the same language. But I don't, I don't see it as being hindering at all. It's just you recognize if somebody doesn't speak that language. Because I work with plenty of folks today and have before that don't. And you've just got to be able to relate what you're trying to communicate. It's almost like maybe doing shorthand or something to some degree. So I think, you know, when you're working around some veterans that have a similar background, sometimes you get the benefit of shorthand.
Okay, thank you.
So are there any questions that you, that you think we should have asked you today that we did not?
No, I mean, I would be kind of, I'd kind of say foolish, but for me to ask you to ask me more questions. No, not really. I mean, you hit on the topics, you know, some of the concerns I had when we talked about revenue, tax base, some of those things, which I think if you've lived in this community for any length of time, you kind of know that's out there. And it's just kind of the age-old problem of kicking the can down the road until you have to deal with it, which is unfortunate, but that seems to be pretty prevalent in our culture as a country. So, you know, I recognize that the can might not get kicked down the road any longer. And it might be time to have to deal with some things that maybe we've put off for a while, not necessarily just at the local level, but I'm speaking even more for the state potentially. So, and I'm well-informed of those things. So I guess with that said, I know what I'm getting into, if selected.
Since we have a couple of minutes left, is there anything you would like to tell the assembly that we did not ask you or anything you'd like to share about your experience, work experience that we did not go over?
Sure, I appreciate that. I guess, you know, it's kind of funny when this process started because I came in on the second round. I haven't actually looked at the other candidates, I'm refusing to do that. So really, my goal here is to try to convince you I'm the best candidate or fit for what's, what you're looking for in a manager. That's really what I'm setting out to do here. I think I am a proven leader. I think my leadership background, those of you that have had, that I've had the ability to work with in the past, I think probably have a little bit more firsthand information on that. But I think if you were to ask anyone that I work with or I've worked for, they'll tell you the same thing. I think I value highly being a great communicator. So I put a lot of emphasis on spending time developing effective ways to communicate with people. And that's different stakeholders. So I appreciate the opportunity to do that, and that means a lot to me. And I think that's well-suited for the role such as the borough manager. And I think frankly, and I'll kind of end it with this, is I do have a unique perspective. I do have insight into borough operations. I do understand the infrastructure in the valley. do understand the infrastructure in the valley, uh, our communities and the diversity of the communities that we have, the individual needs that they have, how we have to tailor at times services, uh, to different communities. I can't expect that we're just going to have a cookie cutter approach, uh, to delivering services to communities. Um, and I've established, uh, positive working relationships across the board. So whether that be in local government or, or other stakeholder groups throughout the valley, I think I've demonstrated I can manage that effectively. So with that said, um, we'll see where things go.
Well, we appreciate your time, Mr. Brown, and we, we appreciate you being here with us via video. And we will, we will be in touch later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time today. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
So our next, our next interview is 11:30. Do you want a break?
Let's do it.
For about 15, maybe 17 minutes, get, get back ready, and about three minutes before 11:30?
Yeah, we'll come back on at, uh, 11:25.
Good afternoon to you all. I'm fine.
Afternoon, your time. I'm Lonnie McCackney. I'm the Matsu Borough Clerk, and I'm going to be asking the questions of you today. But before we get started, I wanted to introduce you to the assembly members and the mayor. We got Mayor Vern, Vern Halter.
Good morning. Can you all see me and hear me okay?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Then we got Assembly Member Dan Mayfield. We got Assembly Member Tam Bovee. Assembly Member Jesse Sumner.
Hi.
Assembly Member George McKee. Assembly Member Ted Leonard. Assembly Member Stephanie Nowers. And Assembly Member Tim Hale. So we've got nine questions that we're going to ask you today. We've got an hour timeframe. So if we get to a point where I think we need to move on to the next question, I think you can see me and I'll be standing up so we can move forward to the next question. So if you see me stand up and you can just wrap up your answer, that would be great.
Okay.
Are you ready to get started?
Ready.
Okay. Describe the most challenging management situation you have ever, ever experienced, and how did you strive to resolve the challenge? What was the outcome? And if you could revisit it, would you do anything differently?
The most managed, the challenging one that, um, and I think I, I'm not sure what you have from Baker Tilly, um, but probably the most relevant one to you all, um, is the Cordova Center. Uh, and I'm, I'm assuming it's not too far from you. You may have not been there, but, uh, um, we finished it in 2016. Um, I equate that to kind of a perfect storm of challenges from, uh, personalities to funding, um, to marketing, to all the discrete elements that could go into a, a project, and how over the course from inception, uh, 15 years, 20 years before I got there to when it was completed, that, uh, when I walked in the door, the, the council, uh, made it clear to me that, um, that was your number one goal. Number one also in terms of, there was, there was a, um, some diversity amongst the council of whether to even complete it, completing it for some, a couple, might have been, uh, selling the shell of the building and cutting our losses. Um, so, and I, I outlined that, I think, uh, in my, uh, in my response to Baker Tilly, but, uh, it was, uh, the funding was completely screwed up. Uh, the project management on the ground was, uh, for years, internal to our DPW, and it was a, a good fellow, but, um, did not have the skills, came from Ohio and did not have the skills, was not a trained engineer. And we were trying to cobble together about a $35 or $36 million facility. Just the logistics alone, and again, Cordova, trying to get materials in there. Um, and as you know, you can't drive there. So, uh, was an extraordinary challenge. Uh, but I think it, as near as I could tell, it came off the wheels before I, a couple of years before I got there, because, uh, the city was somewhat trapped in its bidding process, taking the low bidder. Um, and, uh, by that, we got exactly what the, the bid was. And all we got was a shell of a building, um, that was sitting vacant when I got there. And I'm guessing many of you may remember the winter of, uh, I think it's 2012, 2013, um, in Alaska, at least around the Prince William Sound, they declared a snowpocalypse and, uh, the shell with no windows and nothing else in it, uh, was all we had. And we were tied up at the precipice of litigation. We managed to get out of that, um, spent a lot of time down in Seattle, a lot of time with mediators. Um, but the end state, that didn't bore you unless you went with the processes of collecting the right team, uh, getting the right people involved, getting, I think the book calls about getting the right people on the bus. Um, allowed us to open the State of the Art Center late winter of 2015, early 2016. Um, had great partners with the Rasmution, uh, Foundation. Uh, and, uh, it, it was until I left and as near as I can tell from keeping up with them, a game changer for the city of Aberdeen. Uh, hindsight, um, well, one thing is be careful what you ask for, you just might get it. Um, I, yes, there's always hindsight. Um, everything's perfect from the mirror of history, or most things anyway. So certainly, it would be, um, some things I would do different. Probably the most memorable that can jump out to me is very earlier in the process, partnering with the native village of Iac, uh, the federal tribe that's there. It constituted maybe 20% of the city's population. And they have access to resources through the Department of, uh, Indian Affairs that, um, would have been extraordinarily helpful, which came along eventually. But, uh, there was a lot of deep sentiments between some of the, the tribal leaders and some of the existing council and former city leaders that took a lot of time and managing before we got to the point. Uh, but I do think engaging them and earlier in the process would have been helpful financially and in terms of, uh, communities, community-wide support.
So this is going to be a two-part question. If you need me to rephrase or re-stated, let me know. If you have reviewed, if you have reviewed our budget and our caper, what is your assessment of our financial condition and what recommendations do you have for us for improvement and to achieve long-term fiscal sustainability without raising taxes? And tell us about your fiscal management experience, budgeting, reporting, cutting costs, and building and maintaining reserves.
I'm going to assume that Baker Tiller, Tilly gave you a fairly decent package. It's been a long time. So you, you see, um, not only my military and federal experience as a civil servant, 30 years, uh, but, uh, 15 years going on it as a, a city manager in several cities. And that, I think that breadth of experience, and every one of them had a finance department. And every one of them had financial issues, unique to that community, unique to that state. So each time you develop a new cadre of, uh, people at the local, state, even, um, at the federal level with your congressional delegations. So to speak to the breadth, I think I, I believe I would bring enormous background in doing budgets, budgeting, working with financial directors, working with community stakeholders. Um, one thing I would challenge you to is, uh, or challenge Baker Tilly to go back and tell you, look at the other cities I've managed. Um, the majority of them, three, three of them have, uh, improved their bond ratings while I was there. Um, we improved the city of Aberdeen, um, about a year and a half ago. Fitch is double A plus. Um, I looked up recently Mount Juliet, Tennessee. I was there over four years. Um, Moody's header page on the Moody, when you Google Mount Juliet, Tennessee for Moody's, says that it's been a rock-solid double A plus since 2009. I was the city manager in 2007 through 2011. And I tell you that because that's in the middle of a recession, as you well know. And to move the ball, I think in the middle of a recession gives you maybe some comfort, some confidence in the financial acumen that I can bring to the table. Uh, yes, I've looked at, um, your budget. I really commend whoever was, uh, I'll call it the budget in brief, but the little prospect one, I think it's about 20 pages long, the thumbnail that, uh, provides you the sketch, because budgets can get long and laborious and tedious. Um, I think certainly with the debt that you have, how could you not be concerned? Um, is it an overwhelming concern? No, it's a manageable concern. Uh, and to me, that's a prospect that you're growing. Um, you're doing well. You're seeing that by most every measure. It will be a challenge as we come out of this virus, this pandemic that we're all stuck in, uh, and the financial and economic threads that will run through your budget. Um, everything from the educational side, which is a, a large preponderance of it, to, I mean, just how will schools possibly be restructured? And we're an active part of that right here in Maryland at the local and state level. Uh, do classes in the future relook how they're going to be structured, uh, using a lot more of what we're doing right now? Uh, but at the same time, the cost associated with, to the children in terms of socialization skills and impact on the families, et cetera. So, but specifically as it relates to the budget with education being, uh, the largest portion of it, I think, um, one of the low-hanging fruits might be, and I didn't see a profile of that, maybe I just missed it, is one is looking at your restructuring, your debt. Um, you know that debt is at a historical, I mean, not debt, but interest rates are at a historical low. Um, within the last two months, we put forward to my council two, um, two bonds, previous bonds that will, one of them alone will save us $200,000 over the next 10 years. And that's just, there, there's a, a unique opportunity right now, I believe. And the environment has changed, and we need to be as attentive. And I'm, I'm absolutely certain your, your budget people, along with the bonding people, are talking to some of you on a daily basis about what could you do? Um, and a lot of that depends on the age and the size of the budgets or the, the bonds. But that would be one of the principal ones. Uh, I don't see, one thing I, and I'll end it on this, I hope, if I don't answer your question, please rephrase it, but what would I do? Um, from what I can tell, I don't see coming in there with a, um, a, an axe. Uh, I've been doing budgeting since I was a second lieutenant. That's back in the late 70s. Small budgets up to a half billion dollars at, at White Sands and now multiple city budgets. Uh, there is always, I, I truly believe there is always some fine tuning, using technology as a force multiplier is one prime example. You know, I don't come up to see you, we do it this way. It saves a lot of time and money. So there's technology applications throughout the budget process that you can apply. There's efficiencies, um, that you can do in terms of personnel staffing, your entry process, your exit process, uh, working with the states on things like PERS and all of that, that we do down here at the state level too for our, but I don't see using an axe. Um, I've always been opposed to, uh, okay, we've got to cut, we've got to cut, we've got to cut. Uh, it's a matter of the federal and the state and the local budgets for 40 years. Uh, there are efficiencies in economies that could be in there, but you don't cut with an axe. You use, you know, you use a laser and you pinpoint out, uh, and you focus on economies and efficiencies that you can do and measure that. Go back immediately over the, you know, short and long term with metrics. How did that affect the budget? So, uh, that's my, uh, response to question two.
Assembly Member Leonard had a question for you, Mr. Robertson.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Robertson, again, she said, as she looked at our caper, our school district is a large portion of our local, uh, tax structure. Have you worked with other subcomponents of the entity like the borough and sharing?
At the school level?
Or, yes, have you worked with, uh, how you share the, the taxes and?
Yes. Well, obviously, being in Alaska, you have to. So at Cordova, yes, there was a cross-fertilization of that. And then, um, in Kentucky, I spent some time, um, with the cities responsible to a large extent back then. Um, we had an independent school district from the county and therefore the school district partnered with the city to do a lot of the budgetary and financial management for it, but it was still autonomous. But the financial web was woven so that, um, I won't tell you, I had oversight, the school board had oversight along with the assembly or council at that time. So a couple of the places I've had, I've had school intervention or school oversight choose, uh, but not in every community.
You probably, you already touched up on the follow-up question that I have here, but I'm going to.
Okay.
See if you already, if you have something to add. What is your philosophy when faced with a budget shortfall?
Uh, you're right. I think I hit that. Um, one specific, and it didn't address it in this, when I talked about economies and efficiencies, it's this notion of, uh, and it was profiled last Wednesday in the Wall Street Journal. They had a excellent section on leadership. It's a notion of mission creep. You as an assembly are, provide the guidance and the budgets, uh, to the administrators, and it goes out from there. And you say, this is what we want to accomplish. These are our goals. These are our priorities. But often, and it's not unique to anywhere I've been, it's been across the board. Military, spent a little time with the state many years ago, and municipal, local, uh, operations. A leads to B and B leads to C. And when you blink, you're providing services that were never contemplated by the leadership, never necessarily asked for by the stakeholders or constituencies, and certainly not necessarily budgeted. Um, you have to have your, your boots on the ground, so to speak. You have to see that, get very comfortable with what you're doing and why you're doing it. But then you track at that process back to what did you charter us to do as your administrator? What did I charter the staff to do within that budget? To start looking at, and that's one element of those economies and efficiencies, are we doing more than what we promised? And why are we doing it? And if so, we need to bring that back to you through the budgetary process next time. This is a good service. We need to keep doing it. But I haven't been in any organization where I can't think of residual items that tend to sneak their way into the operational activities, and then that becomes a line item on a budget and you're not necessarily aware of. So that's along with that laser, rather than the axe, is how I focus on that. So that's along with that laser rather than the axe is how I focus on that.
Mr. Mayor has a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You know, the biggest shortfall in the Matsu borough's funding right now is, is school bond debt. And our relationship with the state of Alaska. Originally it was supposed to be 70% state, 30% borough. And that's been, it's been shifting, that relationship's been shifting. How was you working at it, correct that? Or what are your thoughts on that relationship and what to do about it?
Well, I've uh, from being in Alaska and also from the possibility of coming back to Alaska, not here, but uh a couple of other cities have asked me to rejoin the team. But um Homer did and um it was a week before the coronavirus. And after all of that, it just wasn't the right thing to do. So I only answer Mr. Mayor in terms of, I've tried to keep up with Alaska. And I know the, the shifting sands of the state versus municipalities or the boroughs have been a ongoing debate. One such that sort of distracts, I think, at least from the media way down here, 5,000 miles away. Uh, of what is the mission? What are we trying to do? What are we trying to prove? Me as a, a borough administrator, um, other than being your advocate, other than championing what the borough's position in Juneau, other than that constant drumbeat of our needs versus our resources at the state level. To me, that would be and should be the primary role. And certainly that's a partnership, not only with all of you, but principally with the mayor. That visibility. And then conversely, also making it crystal clear from the council perspective through the schools. These are the resources we have. This is a shared burden between us. And like it or not, like many other communities, um, maybe most, that pie, we're gonna have to keep look focused on not how do we keep cutting on that pie? But how do we expand that pie? And I know it's probably a bad metaphor. But growth, how can we keep growing? Which will allow us to better supplement that. So I, I do think there's that, that uh if then kind of proposition that if we keep growing, this could be a good problem to have because we still have the resources to dedicate towards the school.
Tell me a little bit about the relationship with the Matsu borough with the Matsu, Matsu school district. What's, what's our function?
In terms of the schools, you, you exercise oversight of it. Not the day to day administrative thing, but the budget part of it comes, I mean, you're, you're the administrator. Just like in Cordova, we were doing the, the school budget. It would be passed through from us. But your taxes, your property taxes, all those things that you have to legislate are a partnership with the school.
Correct. Thank you.
Describe your management style and in your daily activities, how do you ensure accountability and avoiding priorities at the Borough Assembly from falling through the cracks or otherwise being unachieved?
Well, I've certainly had decades of opportunity to refine and hone my leadership skills. I think I go back to the principle and I tried to espouse this in my question with Baker Tilly is uh the, the public servant notion. Not the civil servant, not civil service, but the public servant. I've been blessed to have a, a truly extraordinary career where I've led maybe some of your sons and daughters or your husbands or wives for a long time and then in municipal management, again, providing services. And I think at times we tend to get away from the notion that we're here to serve. And what I have tried to do in my previous positions and will anywhere I continue to go as long as I keep doing this is that, that concept to me is if you're a, if you own a bakery, every morning you gotta get up at four o'clock in the morning and you gotta go bake the bread. What you did yesterday, the achievements you did last year, that award you won for being the best bakery two years ago, not gonna pay the bills tomorrow, today and tomorrow. So I think we, often as public service and that notion of we got this, we have this job and it's there and it's all the time um is a little disingenuous at times to the notion that we need to keep re-earning that. We need to re-keep earning that trust and that confidence. So to my leadership style, I don't know if you, this was a conscious intent by you or if you're even aware of it. But uh on your recruiting brochure that Baker Tilly put out for you and they talked about the ideal candidate or the, the profile that you're looking for. And that's what enticed me, one of the reasons, primary reasons to come back. If you read that carefully, you'll notice that in the profile just alone, the word integrity is mentioned at least three or four times. It doesn't talk a lot about necessarily, certainly budgeting's part of it, financial management's part of it, running EMS and FEMA and all of those indiscreet or discrete components. But the word integrity, that means a lot to me. I have a very strong belief and I try to practice that and I try to practice that in terms of how I lead people with integrity, with credibility, with transparency. And I will profess that um I think I'm of, in terms of leadership, at times a high demanding person. But I think the results, I believe that the results are reflective is every community I've served. The old scout motto of leaving it better than you found it. I've left it better than I found it. Today, I'll challenge any one of you, go to the webpage for the state of Maryland. The governor chairs the Board of Public Works. He and the comptroller of the state and the, and the uh lieutenant governor. And we just had a 1.5 million dollar, 1.4 million dollar bond approved for the city of Cordova for our stadium. We've been working on that for a year and a half. When I got here, we were on the verge of litigation with the people who play baseball over there. It's Cal Ripken's team. So that's the kind of leadership, that's the kind of environment I believe I've set with every community I've been in. And then that's one that I think has been responsive and reflective of the stakeholders' needs.
What is your experience with collective bargaining and maintaining productive relationships within organized labor?
If you look at my resume, you'll note on there that I only put, I didn't put 30 years of military experience. That doesn't fit well on a two-page resume. I listed my last two positions. One was Chief of Staff of the largest installation in the United States, White Sands Missile Range in New Mexico. The other was Chief of Staff of the largest signal communications organization outside the United States, the Second Signal Brigade. And it was just as the war started. I was assigned there outside Heidelberg, uh, about four days before nine 11. And I had been stationed in the Pentagon, so I'm blessed. I mentioned that Second Signal Brigade because in that position, I was the civilian GS 15 there. I was responsible for thousands of local national employees throughout six Western nations. And then we deployed and we had them down in Southwest Asia in Iraq and Afghanistan and Kuwait. Most of them, German, Belgian, Italians. And every one of those had a works group, a union. That's what their term was for unions. So I've been baptized at the highest levels, I think, in working with unions. Uh, you've never had a challenging union until you dealt with an Italian dock worker. Just, just uh and they had us over a barrel. 2002, you know what was happening in 2002? We're on the front lines in Europe to deploy downrange, Iraq, the war just started. And the materials, particularly the communication materials, go through the port of Pisa or Vincenza. And I had several hundred Italian dock workers down there and I had to go down because they were held, hold it, a, a small handful of people were holding up the United States militaries war in Iraq to some extent. Don't wanna over exaggerate it, but we brokered a good deal, a lot of language, a lot of cultural issues we had to go through. Just to some extent, the same thing, although not union, but up in, in Cordova with the IBEW. That was our union there. And working with them and, you know, having a industrial based union represent municipal employees rather different. And never had any kind of, any issues. And I say that in my philosophy, it's partnerships, it's communication from the very onset. It's making, putting them at the seat and you, you know that. It's being at the table. People get angry, people get frustrated if they don't have the perception or the reality of being part of the conversation. That doesn't mean I have to agree with it by any stretch. But like you and everyone else, they've gotta be part of that process.
So to follow up on that question, have you ever been before a labor arbitrator or court due to a labor issue?
Yes. Would you like me to pontificate?
I just wanted to let you know, I would like you to, yes. But I wanna, I just wanna let you know that we've got a half hour left and we've got five, five more questions.
Uh, certainly, and I mentioned one, so I'll move through that, but Cordova. I think I was down in Seattle with a mediator um within a matter of my first quarter there. Yes, and then certainly within the military structure because we use, still use federal mediators. We were on the precipice, we hired a retired federal mediator. Within a few months after I got here to broker the, exactly, I didn't, that's not a segue, but that deal I talked to you about, the Ripken Stadium, where we just got a million and a four today. Three and a half years ago, we hired a mediator between us and Ripken to try to work our way through the entire mediation process because we were throwing uh bricks at each other. And uh today, we're sharing 1.5 million dollars dedicated to the stadium. It's on page 132 of the Board of Public Works. You'll see where Governor Hogan approved it.
What do you consider to be the borough's top three opportunities and how would you capitalize on them? And conversely, what are the top three challenges and how would you advise the assembly to approach them?
Well, now you're asking a guy who's 5,000 miles away. So I certainly, in what I can read and what I can try to keep up with, but living it and knowing it from afar is a little different. There, you have a little disadvantage, but opportunities, um, I think, but also a challenge. I'd say the first one is growth. Growth, growth, like location, location, location. I personally believe if you're not growing, you're gonna become redundant. But growth is a two edged sword, as you well know. You're sitting there because you all have a passion to serve your city. You had your reasons for doing it and you know that uncontrolled growth, unbridled growth is not what you want. It's a, it's a Ponzi scheme in the future of subdivision after subdivision or housing area after housing area or business that has no real reason to be there. So controlled growth is a tremendous opportunity, but the challenge comes from the, the notion of controlling it, moderating it. But I do think that's, that's to some extent is back to that budget question, a large part of your future. Another opportunity seems to me is you, you just, to me, your marketing, your, your, where you are. To some extent, why am I sitting here asking to go back home? I can tell you, you won't turn to any of your 300 cable vision, cable broadcast shows and find the, uh, the great outdoor adventure of Aberdeen, Maryland. Ain't gonna happen. The notion of having a dog musher as your guide is just, I'm sorry, I'm gonna pick on you, but I mean, think about that. I guess you have. So I go back to, you know, strength, opportunities, your people. Why are, why are you there? What brought you there? Why do you stay there? Why are TV shows showing these wild adventures? And how can you help market that, tune that in a corona era to capitalize on that? And that again goes to growth, it goes to tourism. It goes to just all the stakeholders bringing them together and saying, everywhere else, when I do that or, um, now I had a good opportunity in, in Tennessee. I was right outside Nashville. I was in a metro area of well over a million. People were coming there too, because we had a tremendous lure, that lure of a Nashville. We didn't have to pay for that. You don't have to pay for that. You get it for free. So I'm envious of you. We don't have that in Aberdeen. And then maybe the, the third one is I say in terms of opportunity. My experience from working in Juneau a little bit, but more in Cordova on a day to day basis. The diversity of the community I had, from what I can tell and from being there in the valley. The opportunities that you have with your people. I noticed on your pro, like Mr. Hayes, uh, and then one of your other applicants. Elmandorf and Richardson just down the road. Uh, this, this fountainhead, if you will, of, of civil servants and soldiers who, and airmen who served there, who stay there, who don't wanna live right there in Anchorage. So that those, those capabilities, long term, that marketing to that subset of where you want those GS 12s, 13s, 14s, retired command sergeant majors or lieutenant colonels. Come up, join our team, live here, open businesses here, that entrepreneurial spirit. Again, you don't have that in most of the communities that I've ever served. There's not that appeal with not those skill sets that are right behind it. Uh, I mentioned on the, the, the challenging side, uh, the growth. The other one I would say is, I, I particularly, and this is not unique to you. I'll take it back to the question you asked about my leadership philosophy. Getting the right people on the bus, getting that team together that continues to hone and sharpen your vision, your goals, and moving that forward in the most cost effective and responsive manner possible. And that doesn't come cheap sometimes and that doesn't come easy. And I know in, in Cordova, you don't have the same challenges by any stretch, but finding the right people to occupy those seats uh was a tremendous challenge. Even in Aberdeen, some of the skills, some of the IT skills that we need, some of the skills in terms of just refuse collection and who's going to do that? And what kind of job is that? And how do we keep them? Can be extraordinarily challenging. So people skills, getting the right people there are, is a terrible challenge. the right people there are, is a terrible challenge. Did I, did I hit everything?
I think so.
Thank you.
If the mayor and Assembly adopted a policy or collectively expressed a stance with which you, you had significant professional disagreement with, and how, how would you express that disagreement and seek resolution and cite an example in your response?
I work for you all. Um, I, I say that, I'm kind of, uh, envisioning the prospects, but having managed in other cities, your manager, your administrator is an extension of you. But she or he don't, don't get the vote. You're the boss. Um, so if I have, and I, I have, uh, I say that in a, in a proactive manner, because certainly, um, I have had opportunities and continue to have times where, are you sure you want to head in that direction? Um, I think the biggest challenge I have is, is not being asked. Um, you, my councils and the previous councils, they make a tremendous investment in me. And every one of them has spent time and money to move me up there, and then my academic training, my federal training, all of that kind of goes into who I am. And I assume I'm there because you value what I bring to the plate. So I don't ask for much more, and I hope administrators are, is ask me. And when I share with you my thoughts, um, hear them, weigh them, and do whatever you feel is appropriate, because I'm not elected, your administrator's not elected, we're an extension of you. Um, so I think in terms of having some real challenges, um, as long as you hear me, and I promise you one thing, we'll have a commitment. Um, I will provide you a dialogue if you invite me up there. I have with every community, every boss I've ever had. Um, to me, those, you're only as good as the people that you surround yourself with, and I, as I said, I hope I would be an extension of you. One example, um, my first community. I was fresh out of the Army, um, federal service. Uh, my son had had some medical trouble, uh, issues. We had to pull him out of the University of Kentucky. I was at White Sands. My wife, my wife's a retired Army officer too now, but she was, uh, at White Sands too. Um, she's a nurse. And, uh, we put our papers in and we left within a matter of a short time and, uh, pulled our son out of school because we had to do that. We missed a large part of their lives, both of them, by both being on active duty. So we had to do the right thing. I only mention that is, when we got him repositioned, I was ready to go back. And the closest thing I thought to what my skill sets were and what my training has been, in urban planning and leadership, administration, running large organizations for city management, community management. So I took a job in Ashland, Kentucky. It was about 100 miles from where we were staying. I was living with my mother, um, at the time, we were living with my mother. So we were close, we could stay connected to our son, who was back at the, in Lexington at the University of Kentucky. And, um, I, I said, put me in. They interviewed a whole bunch of people, they did it on their own, they didn't hire a firm to do it. Um, they had a previous city manager that was describing me, I never met him, has retired in place after 20 years. And so I came in because they said, we want some young energy, we want some passion, we want some integrity. There was apparently some integrity issues. Um, and I said, I'll take it, I'll take it. I didn't sign a contract, I shook a hand of the mayor, and I went down the hallway about two weeks and, uh, started my job. Well, I quickly discovered that what, there is sometimes a delta between what is said to entice somebody there and what reality is. Um, no harm, no foul, we had a good parting. I lasted about 10 months there. Um, but I saw the writing on the wall. I saw that this is not what you really wanted from me. Um, and so I offered to resign. They, I had no resignation package, I think, other than the accrued vacation, I didn't get a dime from them. But that was a learning lesson for me, um, because I, I believe in integrity, I believe in ethics, and I believe when you say, this is what we're going to do, I grew up with that, that we're going to do it that way. And I understand there's differences in it, but, um, I guess I serve at the pleasure of the mayor and the Assembly, and so therefore that's the way things go sometimes.
Discuss, discuss your approach to, excuse me, discuss your approach with, in experience with economic development and diversification of the tax base. And can you share both a success story, any project that didn't turn out well, and, but however you learned from that project?
Um, most recent, and I'll try to keep it to the here and now, and I think I tried to provide Baker Tilly some examples. So don't take my word or whatever, go to, go to a webpage. Um, Aberdeen was just selected as the new home of the University of Maryland Upper Chesapeake Hospital System. And they rolled out a 20-year plan that they said was going to be a billion dollars. Um, that's economics 101 in my mind. That was not, that was two and a half plus years in the making of working with city officials, hospital officials, state officials. I mean, getting a bed space moved, and if you've ever been involved with that, is extraordinarily complicated, uh, particularly in a high-density area. I mean, we are 50 miles, 40 miles from Johns Hopkins University Hospital. So you can understand the nuances, and wow, we're going to be part of the largest university system in this state, this hospital system. At our last council meeting, and it's streamed online, so you can go to the last one, you will see a vascular surgeon come and talk about investing $19 million in an old high school that the city has sold to bring a vascular surgery outpatient clinic. It's about 150 yards from City Hall, right core downtown, because that hospital is the seed to grow this community. And he spoke about Aberdeen being the next Rochester, Minnesota, the Mayo Clinics, because there's this potential, because of the synergy of having Johns Hopkins and the university here within our serviced area. We also have Aberdeen Proving Grounds with 20,000 federal employees, and the Department of Defense are closing military hospitals. So we have a tremendous opportunity there. So growing economies, growing housing, growing the population, I think you can see this network starting to develop, kind of all goes back to that core. I would say the biggest probably disappointment that I can recall right offhand, uh, in economic development was investing tremendous amounts of time and energy, not a lot of resources, in getting accredited in a Main Street program in Kentucky. Most states have an old town, a Main Street program. They try to reinvest in the downtown. In Aberdeen, we were accepted about a year ago into the Maryland State, uh, very few cities, probably only about a third of the cities in the state of Maryland, having accredited, state-approved Main Street program to diversify, build. Uh, but in, in Ashland, um, Ashland, she's not standing up, so I still have a little time. Ashland is a town of, uh, was a town in the 1980s of over 40,000. It was the third-largest city in the state of Kentucky back in the 70s and 80s. It was a home of AK Steel and Ashland Oil. When I got there in 2006, it had 18 and a half thousand. Ashland was, uh, the, uh, the oil company had moved, Marathon Oil, as it's now known, and AK Steel had shuttered its doors. And so we have all this infrastructure and all these buildings that date back to support a community of 40,000 with deserted buildings and all of that, and we have a community of 19,000. And the low-hanging fruit was the Main Street program, start down your core downtown. Um, and we, we spent exorbitant amount of time and energy to capture that, and we were included in the Main Street program. But even as long-term, as I've tracked that, the return on the investment, but I, I somewhat attribute that, is Ashland still die, um, was not necessarily, the ROI was not that great.
First, please tell us your management style with department directors. Then please describe how you view the interaction of department heads and other staff with the Assembly versus the manager's role.
When you got up this morning and you looked in the mirror, I hope you were excited about the day. I hope you were excited about meeting me, because I was you, put on a tie and do all those things. And I'm not trying to be, um, facetious in the terms of, just like the, the people who pick up your trash, just like the people who work in your animal control, just like your financial people, all of them sort of, they put their pants on the same way that you do. If we keep that concept in mind in terms of department heads and anybody that worked for them, why are they working for me? So when you look in that mirror in the morning, are you excited about being there? Are you thinking, you know, oh, good Lord, he's coming back from vacation today? I, I, I want you to be excited. I particularly want my department heads to be excited, but I want them to manifest that down to their team. I go back once again, who you put on the bus is the most important decision you make. So, yeah, I, I can buzz you with all terms like empowerment, um, I, you know, collaborative leadership. I think the more important notion is, I have demonstrated over my career, it's documented, of, uh, walking the talk, of investing in people and growing them. And that sometimes can be tough luck, too. Uh, and that's the way it goes. But all that said and done is, I want them to be as excited, the department heads, uh, about, I'm here today, and how can I help you, enable you, empower you to do your job? What things are getting in your way of delivering quality service to the citizens of Matt Sue? And conversely, the relationship to you all, um, and maybe it's military, maybe it's personal. I, I think it's a little bit of both. Um, people generally don't do well when they have multiple bosses. Um, the chain of command is important to me. Um, and in that concept, and in every community I've served, I promise you, this is not an isolated topic. There's always this notion, particularly as assemblies or councils change, and as the personalities change, is what did you hire me to do? I'll stick in my lane, and I ask you to stick in yours. Now, that doesn't mean by any stretch, talk to the department heads, interface with them, get your questions asked. I do have a requirement, my department heads and everywhere I've been, backbrief me. Tell me that the mayor came in and was talking about this bond package. So I can be as fluent, or try to be anyway, as they are, and being proactive. Because what I've seen a lot of times in communities is, when you get discreet siloed kind of interaction with a department head, it's the administrator, it's the manager that kind of weaves that together, you know, saying, okay, yeah, there's a financial implication, but there's also an EMS implication to that. Or there's also a DPW element. So it's the girl or guy in the center of that that's sort of weaving all of this together to say, if you trust me, if you enable me to do your bidding, one, I promise you, I will be responsible. My councils, you'll know generally within the same day you ask, or the next day, and if I don't know the answer, I'll tell you, and I'll go find you that answer. But that doesn't mean by any stretch, you should not use, that you shouldn't be collegial and inviting and engaging, and particularly during the budget process, actively, uh, having discourse with the department heads, uh, because they, they know their subject matter better than any administrator ever will. And so, uh, that's the, the lane I think serves the communities I've been in the best.
Assembly member Leonard had a question for you, Mr. Robertson.
Uh, yes, Mr. Robertson. I think you answered the first part of my question was, how do you handle a assembly member if they go directly to a director and say that I want something? But I did like what the mayor said in his last question. How do you handle, or what's your philosophy with directors that if they leave something that so passionately, they go around you and try to, you know, campaign with elected officials?
Um, I go back to the chain of command. Um, I can't envision, I'm not saying it's never happened, of one circumstance where I have ever had so much of a, a delta between what I think ought to be done, or what we should be talking about, and what a department head, that the department head has went around me and subverted and not let me know. When I've reached that point, and I've reached that point, sometimes, particularly in the budgetary process, is I said, okay, you're passionate about this, let's go visit Assembly Member X or Y. Let's you and I go in and let's present our positions. Because, um, when we're communicating, when we're open to divergence of thought and opinion, and the more we talk about that, and the more we see someone else's opinion, because you know what, I have been and I can be and I probably, I will be hosed up at times, and so were you, and so were the department head. But the more thought we give to that, so the only boundaries I put on that, and it's never happened to me, where one has consciously went around something that she or he so passionately disagrees with me, that, it happens in the Pentagon, you never know where the knives come from in your back in the Pentagon, but in municipal management, given the collegiality and the team building you try to do, there's that partnership is, I got it. I disagree with you, let's go visit, let's talk about this issue. So it may be, a lot of times, the best opportunities for that are in workshops with the council, where the department heads come in and say, hey, on the budget, I think he's got it wrong, and I, this is the reason I've got it right.
Mr. Mayor's got a question for you also.
Yes, sir.
It's still on the same subject, you know, you, you're talking about dealing with the manager, with the directors underneath you. On the assembly, we have seven assembly members, seven districts, a lot of different personalities. Do you, uh,
Imagine that.
Do you prefer to deal with these seven members individually, or more as a collective as a whole?
I responded to that, and I don't know if you gleaned it from mine. Um, one of the questions on, from Baker Tilly was, how do you try to communicate to keep you up? Um, I will tell you, I really like the notion of what I've seen is Mr. Hayes' uh, I don't think it's on a weekly basis, but his published notes to you all. Um, I usually, every city I've been in, because I started it again, I was forced to have it as a lieutenant, is the daily report, the unit report. So even going down to where the infantry company lines up, and there's 40 guys, and everybody president accounted for them, what are we going to do today, and how are we going to do it? And that gets reported up the chain. And eventually, that, all that information, even years ago, got to somebody's desk at the Pentagon from thousands of miles away. It works. And it works a whole lot better now because we have automation. So I've tasked my department heads, give me your weekly report. It's not a writing exercise, it's not a lexicon issue, I don't care. Tell me on a weekly basis, so I can help measure what we're doing, and then really- and it really feeds back to the metrics. What we're doing and how we're doing it, what are the big issues? What we do right, what we do wrong, who should we pat on the back? Now, that's a lot of detailed stuff, but it fits to me. So I get eight, nine police and DPW and, you know, Parks and Recreation and all of them. They come to me Friday evening. I synthesize that. I have a routine after church on Sundays, most quiet time. I go into the office, I sit down and I take those nine reports and I cut and I pace and I add my, and I provide that to every one of my council members. And you ask them, the mayor, Sunday night, somewhere around eight o'clock at night, you'll get a weekly report. Two pages, three pages, not a lot of reading, but levels at my side that you ought to know about, the macro levels. So I like dealing with the body. I, I do, but I will understand that your passion might be different from your passion. Your interest might be different from that. So offline email. One council member, two council members come in here on a bi-weekly basis and we sit for an hour on issues unique to them. Again, the administrator works for you. So what, how can we best help you be successful?
So we've got a couple of minutes left and I've got one last question for you. Are there any questions that we didn't ask that you think we should have?
Well, I'll direct it towards the mayor and I'll defer mayor because again, the title mayor. So I read your ideal profile or your, what skill sets and, you know, the, not the schools, not the 15, 20 years of experience, the things that you're looking for. And again, I go back to some notions of integrity and ethics and honesty. How would you maybe two to three sentences or less, or the, the assembly, what are you looking for? What's your goal in this process? What, what kind of output are you looking for and how could I best meet your needs?
Well, I guess, I guess I'll speak for myself and the assembly, any assembly member wants to jump in, they can. You know, I guess we're looking for a very experienced manager to fill in a strong manager position. It's a weak mayor system we have. So we're, we're looking for somebody that can bridge the gap with the, with the directors and the assembly at the same time. And improve communication here, work better with the borough attorney, involve the borough attorney in, in major decisions. And that's, that's where I see the opportunity for you. So that's what we're looking for. We need somebody that has a lot of experience, lot of budgeting, state money coming in, state money not coming in when it should come in. We have a lot of things going on here, you know? Our school bond debt is, is two mils really. That, that has a tremendous impact. So we're looking for a very experienced person. And I, I can say, I was pleased with your answers all throughout. And we, you know, I guess you have to deal with the directors the way you see best fit based on your experience. And I'm satisfied with the way you answered it. And then the way you have to deal with the assembly is, is, I think, as a whole, works a lot better as individually. And not telling each individual, assembly member one thing and somebody else a different thing. That's, that's what we want to avoid.
That's, that's, thank you, because that's why I think those weekly or bi-weekly notes are imperative because it's in writing. What I tell you is what I tell your seven colleagues. And then individually, you want to go offline? Absolutely. Again, I work for you all.
The clerk has an agenda item where the manager has the ability to present to the assembly four or five different items every meeting. We have two meetings a month. So you have that opportunity to direct you with the assembly. And so that's, so very good. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Matt Clark?
Well, that was what we had for you, Mr. Robertson, unless anybody and an assembly member had anything to add. Well, we very much appreciate your time and we thank you for being with us today and we will talk to you later.
Good luck and God bless, guys. And Mayor, didn't want to put you on the spot by your position, but you are a unique entity up there, so good luck.
Your first day, you will go on a 65 mile marsh with me.
I look forward to that opportunity. Take care.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, did you want to recess until right before, a couple of minutes before one?
Okay, so we'll adjourn and recess at one, right? For lunch break until three minutes to one.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We hear you great.
And you can see me?
We can.
Hearing me is the best of the two.
How do you pronounce your last name? I want to make sure I say it right.
Oh, wait a minute, with a name like the borough has, you, you're going to ask me how I pronounce my name? Very simple, Hotka.
Hotka, perfect. Well, my name's Lonnie McHeckney, I am the municipal clerk here at the borough. And I'm going to be asking the questions of you, but first I'm going to go around and introduce the assembly and mayor to you. We've got Mayor Vern Halter.
Welcome.
Mayor, hello.
Got assembly member Dan Mayfield.
Hi, how you doing?
Hello, assembly.
Jan Bovee. Assembly member Jesse Sumner. Assembly member George McKee. Assembly member Ted Leonard. Assembly member Stephanie Nowers. And then assembly member Tim Hale, who will sit here, he'll be joining us any second.
Okay, good deal.
I may be going through and asking you questions. We've got an hour's time for nine questions. And if we need to start wrapping up an answer to a question, you'll see me stand up. And that just means go ahead and wrap up your answer if you wouldn't mind. And here comes assembly member Hale, the wave at you. So the first question is, describe the most challenging management situation you have ever experienced and how did you strive to resolve the challenge? What was the outcome? And if you could revisit the situation, would you have done anything differently?
Only one, right?
Yes, please.
Lots of challenging management situations. Probably the most, I, I, I explored this a little bit in my written answers, but when I came to the city of Port Huron as city manager, they had gone through rough times. Half of city council was, had gone through a recall. The recall was led by the other half of city council. Oh, if you like that, it gets even better. The city staff also led the recall. Almost all of the division directors led the recall and the city manager, the then city manager led the recall. And then the recall failed. Yeah. Council meetings were six-hour screaming matches. The highest rated television show in a three-county area. Okay? Both sides, it, it, it got so bad, literally, people were afraid for life and death. Everybody was hiring private investigators to follow the other folks around. It was really bad. And then I think they got tired of fighting each other and I think they get, and no one winning. And I think they realized that they were looking really bad. So then they hired me. In the face of that divisive situation, that was the word they used, divisive. You know, there were a lot of other words, but that was the one that stuck. And in the face of, it was after nine, nine 11 happened a few months after I started there. The state of Michigan went into a recession. The auto industry really fell apart and the, not so much the rest of the country, as you know, but the Michigan really was in hard times. Governors cut revenue sharing by 20%. Sharing from the state to the local governments was cut 20% with about a week's notice. But despite all those challenges, we got a lot done. We got, so I, I, I worked with council members and they started actually talking to each other and, and discussing items during the board meeting. The board meeting and council meetings became work only. We worked on the issues without personalities. This sounds a little strange, but during the five-plus years I was there, there were only two votes at the council that weren't unanimous. And we brought a lot of heavy-duty stuff in, but it was a matter of working very diligently behind the scenes, making sure everybody was equally briefed. All the answers, all the questions, all the answers to all the questions were given. And we worked through all, everything we needed to on the major issues before we brought them to council. And so then, then we get to, the end results are kind of outlined on my resume. We filled up downtown storefronts for the first time since the 1950s. We filled up the industrial, the city-owned industrial park for the first time ever. We cleaned up depressed neighborhoods in, which is about, in Port Huron, more than half. About two-thirds of the neighborhoods were a lot of people below the poverty level. And we worked through all of those issues. We saw the first non-subsidized housing starts in the city's south side since the 1930s. So we got all of that done in spite of the fact I inherited a really, this huge argument and a really bad economy. So very, very proud of my time there.
This is a two-part question and if you need me to repeat part of it, just let me know. If you, if, if you have reviewed our budget in Capper, what is your assessment of our financial condition? And what recommendations do you have for us for improvement and to achieve long-term fiscal sustainability about, without raising taxes? And tell us about your fiscal management experience, budgeting, reporting, cutting costs and building and maintaining reserves.
Okay. I'm going to re, I'm going to answer in reverse order because I think the answer to the first part will shock and surprise you. So my background is, I, I had this wild idea. Early on in life, I decided I wanted to do two things, help people and protect the environment. That's, I, I was first generation in my family, extended family, out cousins. We were the first generation that had the opportunity to go to college. And I said, what do I do with that fantastic gift? And I figured, I, I want to give something back, wanted to help people, wanted to protect the environment. And I quickly realized local government is where the action is. It really is. A lot more impact on people's life is at the local level than the state or federal. So then I had another really wild idea is that I would actually learn some trades. Blue-collar background, my father says, son, you can do anything you want. You have that opportunity, but why don't you learn a trade first before you go off and do something like working government? So I, I had the idea, I'd actually bring some technical knowledge, some skills into government. And I don't want, there's probably seven poly-sci majors at the table. So I'll offend somebody, I usually do. But instead of studying political science or just general government, I studied engineering. Then I went to work on Wall Street. And I raided municipal bonds for entities like Matsu Borough. And it involved me sitting and reading every week, budgets, accounting statements, everything we could put our hands on. Agreements with other agencies. Their successes, their failures, their capital plans. And I'll get to this, so I have a lot of experience. And then I've worked for a number of different city and county governments in a number of different financial situations. I worked for the city of Cleveland after their near bankruptcy. I worked for, I just went through the situation we had in Michigan. And then I came down and worked for Broward County right, right at the beginning of the Great Recession, where we had to cut back 20% of our staff across the board. So I've been there, done that, got, and, and got in all three situations, got more done for those communities than they ever did when they were flush with money. So to answer your first question, I'm not going to answer it, sorry. You can tell, anybody who says they can tell all about you by reading your budget or reading your accounting report. Not even scratching the surface. And I, I learned one thing in, early in my life as an engineer, to not shoot my mouth off unless I know all the facts or at least enough facts to make a decision. So I don't know your financial situation. And I don't know your ability to get things done. But I will say this, is I've worked for governments who were probably at their lowest financial situation in their entire histories and got a lot of good stuff for them. Got a lot of good stuff done for them. Is that fair? Will you let me get away with that until I learn more about the borough to intelligently answer the question?
I'm going to look at the group here. Oh, go ahead, go ahead. Okay, and this is a follow-up question to what we just asked.
Okay.
What's your philosophy when faced with a budget shortfall? You sort of touched on it a little bit, but if you can expand on it a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you. So a lot, a lot of people would say you immediately put in place a hiring freeze. I, I hate the phrase, I really dislike the phrase, hiring freeze. What we do is typically do something like, sorry folks, we go to each of the departments and say, you cannot hire somebody unless I know, let me know what we're doing, we'll have the management team review it. But what happens with a hiring freeze, well, sometimes necessary, it's too drastic an action because you might have the most valuable position in Borough Hall retire last month and now suddenly you can't fill it. So for example, what we did in Broward County when we were faced with the Great Recession is we put restrictions on hiring, they required more, higher level of approval, but a lot of people shifted jobs. We decided, we, and, and, and so we had truck drivers in water and wastewater move over and they were truck drivers in the Parks Department because Parks Department had a bigger turnover of staff. A lot of people ended up with new assignments. We even had some retraining where people ended up with whole new professions. But they went through a cut, when it was all over, I think countywide, they cut 15% of all staff without one layoff. And, and we provided services very well during that period. And, and as you can imagine, there was a lot of adjusting, a lot of shifting around. So that's one of the first things I would do, is put a higher level of, of review on, on any hires and make sure we, we make do what we have. It's a wonderful time, I always use the expression, pruning trees. The healthiest, most lush luxurious tree can stand a pruning from time to time. And it's a good time for manager to work with assembly and mayor to see maybe over time, some of the departments grew a little too big or maybe we're providing redundant services, as sometimes happen in governments. And it's a good time to, to look and reprioritize everything that, that the borough does and, and maybe cut back on some services or realign some services. It's, it's a good time for self-inspection. Now, that sounds pretty trite, but again, what I can tell you is I've done it very, very successfully in three different times, three different sessions in three different areas.
Assembly member Leonard had a question for you.
Oh, I'm sorry, could I give one more thing? You also, you also go for all those big juicy grants. It didn't happen to the extent everybody expected during the Great Recession. But in most recessions, federal and state governments usually come through. But in most recessions, federal and state governments usually come through with a lot of grant money, more grant money than in other years. And I'm already reading, those are the promises both presidential candidates are promising that once elected, they will come through with an extensive grant program. And you go for those grants and you do stuff, uh, you also take advantage of lower construction costs and you build, build, build. You also have to watch as the developers have the same idea and you think your economy might be slowing down, but in meanwhile, developers will typically build during low times and hope to have, be the first, uh, whatever on the street when the economy recovers. And so they build during downtimes, design and build during downtimes, and then open right before the economy recovers. So you have to watch all those things. So, sorry.
Go ahead, Assembly member Leonard.
Oh. I really appreciate that. Uh, you know, uh, as you've probably heard in the information that we gave, we probably will be facing about, uh, nine to 10 million dollar shortfall. And it's, uh, due to the state legislature starting to pass costs down to the cities and the boroughs. And I'm just wondering about your, also your work with subcomponents, you know, that we are the financial oversight and, uh, for the school district on giving them property revenue. So I'm wondering how you work with subcomponents in the difficulty, if, if you're not that high and your philosophy with working, that'll be a main thing. School district is plus two thirds of our budget, or it's a large percentage of the boroughs, but.
Sure. The, uh, so in my career, I've had an opportunity to work in a number of different, uh, types of government. I've worked city and county. I've worked strong mayor, council manager, and particularly at the county, working for counties in the lower 48, in Florida, in Minnesota. Uh, they're structured so that the Board of County Commissioners oversees everybody's budgets. Not, not the school board so much, but they oversee the clerk of the court, they oversee the judge's budgets, they oversee the sheriff's budgets, they oversee the fire departments and even the volunteer fire departments. Uh, they typically have grant arrangements set up or revenue sharing set up from the county to all of the cities. They have a whole variety of special, uh, assess, assessment zones and a whole variety of enterprise funds. So typically, uh, the governments I've worked for, including Broward County just recently, the budgets are this thick because almost every entity is covered in the budget that comes to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. So it gets extremely complicated. Um, for example, I directly oversaw water and sewer department. And pretty much every meeting we have on every subject has to end with, how do we account for the funds? Excuse me, in other words. Excuse me, you have me talking too much and I'm losing my voice. In other words, who's gonna pay for whatever we just talked about? And a lot of times it's, okay, it should be 40% water, 30% sewer, 10% are water partners at the city, 8% are sewer partners who own part of the wastewater treatment plant, and then we have to go over the special flooding zones for the remaining whatever, 11%. So that's, that's pretty much breathe in, breathe out for most of the jobs I've had in county government, which has been most of my career. Though that level of complexity, and I, I, I'm not gonna say it's easy, but it's something that you, you, you get good at doing and constantly, constantly making sure you keep in mind. Um, directly to your question, staff led by the borough manager needs to make sure that you all are getting the reviews and recommendations you need so you can make good approvals of those budgets for other entities.
Describe your management style and in your daily activities, how do you ensure accountability in avoiding priorities of the borough assembly from falling through the cracks or otherwise being unachieved?
Okay, uh, first and foremost, my management style is based on the golden rule. So in all of those jobs on my resume and others, I've, um, had lots of bosses, either groups of people as a boss or one person as a boss or a lot of times, there I've had jobs where three different people all thought they were my boss. Uh, and some of them were really, really good at being a boss and some of them, not so much so. And I've learned from my own experiences, I, how to treat people, which is how I want to be treated. Uh, the first rule, the, the most important aspect for me of being a good manager is just being a decent person. Um, everybody, every single person out there, uh, has something that drives them, some source of pride, some source of motivation. And, uh, along the way, I struggled with that because mine, as I already described, was to work in government and, and, uh, serve the public. And I tried to apply that concept to other people. And over time, I realized that just doesn't work for everybody. Uh, but for example, if you take the carpenter that you have on staff, that carpenter may not see the bigger picture of protecting the environment or serving the public or keeping expenses down. But you know what? In, in every carpenter I've known, including my grandfather, that they are the best carpenter anywhere. They are really good at their job and they provide good services and they know what they're doing and they have a lot of experience. And you appeal to people's pride in their work. Now that sounds trite, but I dare say in this country, most bosses dash cold water on people's motivations, their desire to be proud in their job. They really do, and it's unfortunate. And I work, and I work hard to do the opposite, to reward people for their good work, to go out and I, I hate sitting behind a desk. I typically will go out and, you know, in, in Broward County, uh, um, 1,300 employees located in about 20 different locations kept me busy, and field crews kept me busy, but I always made sure I made the rounds with notice, no, it's no surprise inspections. But I went out there and visited people at their place of work. And, and, and people love that as long as it's not, you know, a surprise. Um, and my typical question is, how can I help you do your job better? And I've never found an employee in, in city and county government who didn't appreciate that question and didn't answer that question. Um, getting onto that, how do I make sure the job gets done, nothing falls between the cracks? Um, if you're a student of Deming, uh, project management, uh, you'll, you'll, you'll remember Deming started during World War II, came back to the new, uh, industrial, uh, uh, engine after the war to America, and nobody wanted to hear it. So he went to Japan and they were very interested. And as you know, Japan started beating us in the car industry and the electronics industry. And when the Americans in the auto and the electronics industry went to Japan, they, they said, well, the American by the name of Deming came over and taught us all this. Didn't you know that? So it started picking up, all his ideas of project management started picking up in America. And there is a point to the story and I'm getting to it. When I started my career in engineering, engineering and construction were the first American industries to pick up on the concepts of project management and the principles of Deming, getting the job done before the rest of American industry and long before governments in our country. Uh, so I learned very early, um, concepts of project management, getting the job done. I don't know if I shared it in the written, uh, uh, material I sent you, but my motto is if you want your strategic plan done, I'm your guy, we'll get it done. Uh, we'll make sure that every project, every program, every, uh, goal you have is properly assigned to the right person on staff, who then becomes the project manager and leads the effort. Uh, as borough manager, I make sure they have the resources to get the job done.
What is your experience with collective bargaining and maintaining productive relationships with organized labor?
Okay, so don't be, uh, don't be misled by the fancy Ivy League colleges. Um, I'm also a retired Teamster. I know. Not too many people brag about that, but you know, I worked my way through school. Um, I've done lots of different jobs that aren't on my resume. And I have a pretty good understanding of, as I said earlier, what motivates people at all different, uh, corners of the org chart. Um, I've worked in some of the most labor intensive areas in the country, city of Cleveland, uh, state of Michigan. And you wouldn't know it, but, uh, if you travel in the country far enough through the deep south, you come out to South Florida, which is more in relation to New York City. Uh, South Florida, uh, our Broward County is organized for pretty much every job up to division director. Um, so a lot of experience with labor unions. My philosophy is, uh, it's not as big a thing as people give it credit for or blame it for. Um, I work with people, whether they're unionized or non-unionized, whatever, uh, pretty much the same way. Been in a lot of labor union negotiations, contract negotiations, been in a lot of, uh, discipline situations, right up to and including terminating people, working through all the union rules. Uh, for me, in a lot of cases, the disciplines were easier because the union provides a set of rules, a little cookbook, steps to follow, makes it really easy.
As a follow-up question to that, as a manager or, uh, on the manager's side of things, have you ever been up before a labor arbitrator or court due to a labor issue?
Uh, labor arbitrator, yes, court, no. Uh, I'm proud to say that we resolved all our, uh, not only union issues, but HR issues, personnel issues, long before they became court issues. And that's a source of pride. I'm glad to not have that experience. Um, but, uh, yeah, Broward County, the union rules were set up more, more as a, to fault of management, uh, than the unions, but everything, almost all the cases, and every single termination ended up in front of an arbitrator. And when I started, the management routinely lost those cases. And I worked very carefully with the attorney's office to get serious about the, those, uh, arbitration cases and we got, so we won every single arbitration case. So, yeah, certainly experienced there.
What do you consider to be the borough's top three opportunities and how would you capitalize on them? And conversely, what are the top three challenges and how would you advise the assembly to approach them?
Um, your top three opportunities is you have, you only have one fan, amazing opportunity, which is your, uh, beauty, your natural and scenic beauty, which drives your economic development engine. Uh, I might be answering a question ahead, but for me, it all ties in. Uh, I've worked for some communities, including Central Florida, Disney World, that tried to diversify their economy and still are trying to diversify their economy away from tourism. The key is you want to attract companies and employees to work at those companies for the very same reasons that you attract tourists. I mean, you look at me, I'm surprised you didn't, you asked in the written questions is why am I interested in the position? And maybe that's a later question. Uh, it's a fantastic place to live and work. It's a fantastic place to come on vacation. And I dare say, most of the people who get off the ship on vacation, my wife always nudges me and says, why can't you get a job here? Okay? The, uh, computer startup company, the new, uh, dot com net interface, internet, whatever, uh, the new entrepreneur who's looking for, he can operate anywhere he wants to, maybe not in the world, but at least in the United States, operate anywhere he wants to. That's the person you want to attract because he said, yeah, you know, I'd love to live in Alaska and I can run my office out of here. And as that company grows, has absolutely no problem with attracting employees. So I, I can't, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna give you a top three. You have one huge economic, uh, driver that most communities would, would kill for. And that's your scenic beauty, and it's already bringing in boatloads of people. You have to convert them from tourists to full-time residents and companies.
Do you see any challenges? Conversely, do you see the, any challenges?
Uh, yeah, you're a long way away from everybody else. See, you, 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 you went through all this difficulty, hooking me up on the, uh, on the internet and everything to tell you something you already know.
If the mayor and assembly adopted a policy or collectively expressed a stance with which you had a significant professional disagreement, how would you express that disagreement and seek resolution? And as you're giving us the, the answer, please cite, uh, an example in response.
Okay, uh, by the way, these are good questions. I, I really think you're hitting the, hitting the mark for, uh, what, what a, um, board should look for in a manager. Um, first and foremost, I leave my politics at the door, particularly in this age of red state, blue state, everybody's at each other's throat. A lot of those are national issues. A lot of those are social service issues, which don't impact go, uh, local government as much as they do in some of the other levels of government, okay? But particularly in working as a manager and council manager, former government, I leave all of that at the door. And if you must know, on a personal basis, I don't have really that strong opinions on a lot of stuff people are fighting over. A lot of those issues are way too complicated for a little old Tom Hucker to figure out and let alone, nobody cares what he has to say anyway. Okay? It's been a long, no, I've never written an angry, angry letter to the editor. Now, I have written a lot of letters to the editor as city manager, as public works director, as assistant, uh, county administrator and the like. Uh, so disagreement, if I really strongly disagree with the direction you all are taking, I will work all, with all of you behind the scenes, one-on-one, and let you know my feelings. Because if I have that strong a disagreement, there's gotta be a reason and I must have some fact or, or, or experience that would make me disagree with you that strongly. And I would want to share that with you. I really think, okay, this is gonna sound Pollyanna, this is gonna sound really simplistic, but I really think most people who have a disagreement on important issues, uh, just coming from different backgrounds, coming from different sets of facts. And if you get those two people or those two groups or five groups or whatever together in a polite discussion, and they share those experiences and they share those facts, you find that people begin to understand, oh, well, I didn't know. Well, Tom, why didn't you tell me that, um, you, you have a problem because you think it's against state law? I didn't know that. Or, no, Tommy, you're wrong, it's not against state law. And we'll figure it out until we say, yes, it either is or it isn't, or may, and maybe we'll agree, maybe it is. And then maybe we'll agree to put it to the test. But, uh, the bottom line, the, the whole point of my answer is it's, it's all about communicating with all of you, uh, not just in public meetings, but behind the scenes, one-on-one, so that you can, um, you, you basically can air. so that you can um you you basically can air all this and explore all of the issues and all of the background to anything coming up to a vote.
Discuss your approach to to and experience with economic development and diversification of the tax base. Can you share both a success story and a project that did not turn out as well as as well as you'd hoped and what you learned from it?
Yeah, actually, it's the same story. So I'll continue with my story about um when I was city manager in Port Huron, Michigan. Uh, when we last left the story, I had just told you, we filled up all of the storefronts in the downtown. We lowered the unemployment rate. We saw the first non-subsidized housing in the city's south side in decades, ages and lifetimes. Um, I had a elderly lady come up to me after a meeting. She was so sweet, it 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 was a town hall meeting and everybody was trying to come up and talk to us and uh and she was just on the side waiting her turn. And she came up when everybody else had left and she said, Mr. Hucka, I just wanted to meet you. I'm, I think she was in her late eighties, early nineties. And she says, I've lived in two houses in Port Huron my entire life. I was born in my parents' house on Elm Street, which was middle of the south side, depressed neighborhood, it was factory housing. And the factories had all pretty much left. And she said, I got married late at the age of twenty-two. And my husband was a carpenter and he built a house for me on Elm Street, three blocks away. And I've lived in those two houses my entire life. And my husband passed away and I've and I've raised children, I raised grandchildren. And and knock on wood, I I still live in the house. I hope, I hope I don't have to live in a nursing home. And then she leaned in real close. And she said, I've never seen the south side look as good as it does right now. And I don't care, we won all kinds of awards. We won a statewide awards and nation national awards. We were all America's city for all those efforts. And that did more for me, that one woman coming up to me, it just broke my heart. That was wonderful. Um, we, the next step in our development was to, oh, and we filled up the city industrial park for the first time ever. A real challenge in Michigan, because not only was it mostly auto industry, but it was, the auto industry was um uh suppliers at all levels would move into a factory, start up a new product line, like they, one company made steering wheels. They made steering wheels for five different car models for three different companies. Okay? And then they would perfect it and they would grow and they'd add a wing on. And they would grow. And about four years after they moved in and started up, they would move to Mexico because they had perfected the technique. We were constantly trying to refill the same factories over and over and again with the next uh with the next big thing. Uh, the lesson learned, and this is true for tourism too. And if you don't believe me, you can ask people on the Jersey Shore. Just because your big tourist attraction this year doesn't mean you're going to be next in ten years or next lifetime. You have to constantly fuel the economic development engine. You have to constantly stay ahead of the game. So yes, you're naturally beautiful scenic area. Uh, but you don't know when somebody's gonna build a a bigger port on the other corner of Alaska. Or when they're gonna fly people straight into the national park and skip the uh the seaport. Uh, who knew a year ago that most of the cruise lines would come to a halt and not not um and not uh carry any passengers for a year or more? So you have to constantly be reinventing yourself. You have to be constantly looking for the next big thing. Uh, continuing the story in Port Huron, our next big thing was we were working with a developer. We had city-owned parking lots that were growing weeds in the downtown area. If 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 you know your history, urban renewal in the early and mid-sixties, they just tore out entire blocks of vacant buildings and put in parking lots because, well, if we're downtown's gonna succeed, they need a lot of parking. And nobody was shopping in downtown and nobody was using in parking lots. So we came up with a great idea. We would convert one of the parking lots into a parking deck, four-story parking deck, and sell off the other parking uh lots to the best, not the highest paying, but the best developer. And we found a wonderful developer from uh not too far away, who was building residential on the first floor. I'm sorry, I'm backwards. Uh, commercial or office on the first floor and residential on floors two and three, going back about five hundred years where the baker would live above his storefront. And that's exactly what uh the city needed. It was the right scale. It would have filled up downtown so that we weren't just a linear main street. We were two-dimensional, three-dimensional in all directions. Uh, we got fantastic terms for the cost and the guarantees and the project. And um that's when uh we fully realized how powerful some of the businesses were in the area, who did not want to see any development, who did not want to see any competition, who did not want to see the poor unemployed people on the south side get jobs. As strange as that may be, see, people make, some people in this country, in this world, make money off of poor people. And I, as hard as I was working with developers to come into the city, I had people on city council who were calling them, telling scared, telling them, uh threatening them, basically. Uh, so you really have to have everybody on board because it doesn't take too much to scare away good investment.
Assembly member now has had a question for you.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Hucka, thank you. That's a, that's a really amazing, sounds like an amazing turnaround in Port Huron. Um, I guess this is kind of just a, kind of a general question, but um so much of our economy is out of our hands. We're really reliant on oil prices for heat and we can't control those. Um, as you noted, we're really far away. And our energy prices, electricity and heating are high. So it's a struggle for us to attract commercial and industrial development. So I'm just wondering in Port Huron, and you and you sort of touched on it a little bit, but was there some sort of underlying um industry economy change? Or were there like specific policies that you implemented that you felt broad about that turnaround? Or or I suspect it might have been a mix of of things, but.
Yeah, it it was, our saying was is where's this kitchen sink? We'll throw that at them too. Uh, so they're driving for us their potential as a city, their Port Huron is on the lake. Okay? They had a beautiful downtown Victorian storefront that was perfect, uh perfectly preserved, excuse me. Uh, we were forty-five minutes, a half an hour away from the rich suburbs. People don't know, people have an image of Detroit. What they don't know is all the northern suburbs are some of the wealthiest parts of the country. Uh, Gross Point is the old money. Troy and Sterling Heights is all the new money and it's extremely wealthy and there are a lot of people there. And so in most cities, uh the suburbs go into downtown for fun and excitement, for business opportunities. In Detroit, they don't do that. They go out to satellite towns for entertainment. And we were in a perfect location for all of that. Uh, we did everything. We enlisted everybody who wanted to see that city uh perform better. We, I went to, I joined Kiwanis for the first time, I'm sorry. Oh, people would be so upset with me. I joined Rotary for the first time in my life. But we also got Kiwanis, we started friendly rivalry, Kiwanis, uh Oddfellows, Rotary, they had all three. And we started rivalries between them, who could help the city the most. You know, we don't want you there wrapping books or whatever you used to do. You come down and you help paint this woman's house. Well, it went something like this, so we beefed up code enforcement. Code enforcement inspectors would go around and say, ew, there's a house here that hasn't been painted in forty years. And between code enforcement and police department, we'd figure out why. In some cases, it was a potential drug den or it was a budding drug den, in which case it became a police issue. In some cases, uh there was no excuse. And then we leveled leveled the full enforcement uh through our court, code enforcement program. We worked with the judges to make sure they were on board. The prosecutors to make sure they were on board. But what I'm really getting at is in some cases, we found out it was an elderly person who didn't have the money or the ability to go out and paint the house. Well, within about two weeks, with the homeowner's permission and gratitude, we'd assemble a team where we'd have one of the social service, you know, the civics clubs bring people down. We'd have volunteers from the high school, they were looking for extra volunteer credit. Sometimes we'd have band members from the uh local uh high school uh band come down and provide music for everybody. Uh, Lowe's and Home Depot were having a rivalry, how much they could help. So they they deliver all the paint and brushes and ladders and everything we needed. And we'd go, we'd go to work. Uh, the local bags, we were all competing, who could provide whatever funds we needed for that effort. And we didn't do one or two houses, we did quite a few houses that way. Uh, we set records with Habitat for Humanity, the greatest number of uh houses they built in a single year in that community. And so just and the, just looking at that one slice of the pie of derelict houses. I'm sorry, that's a terrible expression, of houses that need help. Uh, just that one thing, we we brought in help from all directions. Uh, commercial development on Main Street, we had a uh uh the uh civic uh groups, we had the uh Main Street USA group, Chamber of Commerce. Everybody was working hard on on grant programs. And I would typically spend my lunch hour walking up and down, visiting the shop owners and saying, you know, hey, uh the hardware store, can you do us a favor? Take the fertilizer bags out of the front window and put in bird feeders. People who come and want to enjoy the afternoon would rather see bird feeders in your front window. And they'd rather come in and buy your bird feeder. No one is gonna come in and buy a sack of fertilizer if they drive up from Gross Point. So, yeah, we threw everything we had at it.
So we've got three questions left and we got about twelve minutes. The next question is, first, please tell us about your management style with department directors. Then please describe how you view the interaction of department heads and other staff with the assembly versus the manager's role.
Okay, um, we live in an age of diversification, technical expertise. Um, you know, every, if you go to a doctor and your elbow hurts, the orthopedic surgeon's gonna tell you, well, you need to see a dermatologist. And the dermatologist says, oh, you need to see an arthritis specialist, you know? Everybody's an expert in a very small area nowadays. So what happens is, as the problems come along, you have to pull together the team of people with all different uh points of view and all different technical backgrounds. So the management team is the place where you get stuff done. I've seen almost no problems in local government where you can just go to one person and say, uh, Susan, could you fix this, please? Usually you have to bring in people from all the different departments. And then a lot of times, they have to bring in their experts from different uh different fields. Uh, and that's the only way you find the best solutions. So we uh, I typically have a lot of meetings with more than a couple of people at the table. Uh, regular staff meetings are extremely important. Uh, but I built teams over the years, you know, they have this thing about breaking down silos. I put together teams that work together so very well and trust each other so very well that um it just greases the skids to everything getting done. When I worked for Osceola County, I realized that um people weren't talking. And people had no idea what the other departments were doing. So we started having our staff meetings. Uh, we we take two-hour lunch. I know, that sounds terrible, right? But we typically would go to the uh, well, in other places, we would go to the water plant and get a tour. And we would have lunch catered there and have our business meeting there after the tour. And all the other, and you know, it was an opportunity for the water department director to show off everything that he was working on. And all the other departments that should have known what he was working on learned all kinds of stuff and had all kinds of questions. And you know, the environmental uh office, oh, is this what we were permitting? I never, I never came out here and did it for me, it was just a bunch of papers on my desk. I used to have meetings where uh did a lot of construction over the years. I used to have meetings when we were about eighty percent done with a construction project to bring out all the purchasing agents and all the accountants and all the grant managers and all the people who were helping work on that project from afar. The attorneys, uh on and on, long, long list of people who were working on the new jail project. But really didn't know much about the details. We'd take them out and we'd give them a tour of the construction. And people's eyes would light up. They would say, you know, I did all the purchasing, I did all the bidding. I went back in there and I processed all your change orders. And this is the wall, this is the wall that we had to do a huge change order for? Yeah, that's it. Uh, and then we went the next step in Osceola County. We went out and looked at other people's agencies. So we would go to the senior center, which my area didn't really have that direct a connection to. But we got the tour, we worked the kitchen, we helped residents or came for meals that day. We met all kinds of people from the community. And then we had our business meeting in a side room. But uh here, you know, my division directors who were over planning and zoning, over housing, had never been in our huge independently-run senior center. And again, their eyes were lighting up, they learned so much more about their community and about their own job.
Assembly member Leonard had a question for you.
Yes. Yeah, you probably have already answered this, but I'll have to add the answer. So that's pretty much all the candidates. Every once in a while, as you probably have with court term, you'll have uh assembly members that look directly to directors and said, I have to review this. So the first part of the question is, what do you, between the director and the assembly member? And then the second one is, as you said, I'm sure it probably happened there too, is where you have directors that decide they're not happy with your decision and go directly to an assembly member to try to.
Yeah, I I saw that, that was in one of your written questions and I said, uh-oh, better not take that job. No, I said, I said, that's uh, that's business as usual in council manager form of government. It really is, it it happens a a fair amount. And a good manager will work and make sure it doesn't happen, continue to happen. So let me, let me run through it. If it's a case where uh the road department's getting a call about a stop sign down or a pothole, uh that's fine, I have no problem whatsoever with that. Typically, we set up hotlines for that reason and we'll take that information from anybody, that request for service from anybody. Because it is what it is, if the stop sign's missing, you have to hurry up and thank you for telling us. We have to hurry up and get out there to do it. So the manager doesn't need to be part of that. Okay, and a lot of those, a lot of those, you all live, you're all by district, except the mayor. You're all the uh uh uh, assembly members are by district. You know corners of the county, of the borough, excuse me, of the borough that uh staff doesn't always get to see on a daily basis. So if you know something that's going on, sure, bring it in. Now, there's a breadbox there, bigger than, as in bigger than. If it's something that it needs a vote of the assembly. If it's something that it needs a vote of the assembly. And my example is, if you want to repave a road, please don't bring that to the road department. Bring that to me and we'll find a way to get that on an agenda item. There's a bread box there, bigger than, as in bigger than. If it's something that it needs a vote of the assembly. And my example is, if you want to repave a road, please don't bring that to the road department. Bring that to me and we'll find a way to get that on an agenda item in front of the assembly for a vote. Because you're gonna, we're gonna have, if it's a new, if it's a new one, we're gonna have to find the money for it, we're gonna have to put it in the budget, we're gonna have to put it in the capital improvement plan. And that legally, I believe, under your code, legally requires a vote of the assembly. So following through, what I would do in cases, if that happens where any one of you are going to staff directly with a request like that, I, I'd sit down and ask you not to. But where it really works is I sit down with staff and say, when that happens, you look them in the eye and say, gee, I really need to bring that to Mr. Huckett because it has to go through channels. You can listen, staff members, you can listen all you want, that's fantastic. But make sure you don't make any promises and you always say, gee, I'll have to bring that to Mr. Huckett and we'll work it through channels.
We've got one last question for you, and I think you mentioned it earlier. So this might be one of your answers. Are there any questions that we didn't ask that you think we should have?
You know, I said earlier, you have great questions. That's my question. That's the question I always ask at the end of interviews when I, when I'm on the other side of the table. Yeah, I, I, well, let me ask the question and I'll answer the question. I have a strange resume. I have the kind of resume where people look at it and say, well, you know, we're hiring for the county and he's worked for cities. What does he know? He was a city manager. Then I apply for a job as a city manager and they go, well, most of his experience is with counties. I know people never say it, but they say, well, he's just a dumb engineer. Oh, he worked on Wall Street. What does he know? But if you really look at all of that, you'll realize I've done lots of different stuff by design. Again, I tried to bring as much technical knowledge, professional experience into government as possible. And as a result, I've overseen lots of different areas and succeeded with programs in lots of different areas. So here, I've got the written answers to your questions. I apologize, but I gave you this long laundry list of areas I've overseen. So much so, I think Baker Tilly took the bottom and they just kind of crunched it all together. But I did that on purpose because I have overseen planning and zoning, engineering. I've overseen environmental protection agencies, facilities management. I've overseen parking divisions. I've overseen the accounting and treasury. I've overseen all of it. And not the same way that a city manager can say, I've overseen all of it. I've overseen all of it directly, hands-on, responsible for the job getting done. I've overseen some of the highest growth areas in the country. Osceola County includes half a Disney World. And because of history of the area, Osceola County wasn't ready. All the famous stuff was, the original stuff was built in Orange County. And they ignored the other half of the property they bought. Well, in my time there, that was when they built the town of Celebration, the animal park, all of their sporting facilities, which are huge. Their huge growth spurt in the last 25 years was in Osceola County when I oversaw planning, zoning, growth, code enforcement and the like, building department. I have overseen economic development in some of the most depressed areas in the country. Port Huron had a lot of people living in poverty, a lot of people living without jobs. City of Cleveland, I oversaw the first three years of their economic renaissance miracle. So I've worked all four corners of the equation, rich areas, poor areas, north, south, Midwest, city, county, strong mayor, council manager, large and small. And I've learned an awful lot about the business of local government. So if you can, look at my resume again and say, well, this guy's nuts. The oddball we thought he was, but boy, he really has a lot of experience in a lot of areas.
Well, we really appreciate your time today. And I didn't say earlier, but it's pronounced Madanuska Susitna.
I, I've been practicing. I was waiting for somebody to say, okay, smart guy, you want this job, pronounce it.
Well, we appreciate your time and it was nice meeting you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. I look forward, hopefully, meeting you all in person.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
Should we let Jeanette know we're going to be a little late, or do you want to?
Yeah, why don't you tell her we'll go up for five minutes and...
Oh, you know what? I've got her cell. I'll tell her we're running five minutes.
Five minutes, so 1:05.
Ms. Bauer, are you there?
I'm here.
Oh, there we go.
I'm here.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you.
So you know who I am, so I wanted to let you know that I'm going to be the one asking questions today. But first, I'm going to go around and introduce you to the assembly members. I know you know some and probably not all of them. So we got Mayor McAlter.
Welcome.
Assembly member Dan Mcfield. We've got Assembly member Tam Bovee. Assembly member Jesse Sumner. Assembly member George McKee. Assembly member Ted Leonard. Assembly member Stephanie Nowers and Assembly member Tim Hale.
So we've got... To meet all of you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. So we've got nine questions in about an hour timeframe to get it, get them covered. So if you see me stand up, please wrap up your answer. It means we're moving forward to the next question. So we're going to start out with the first question. Describe the most challenging management situation you have ever experienced and how did you strive to resolve the challenge? What was the outcome? And if you could revisit it, is there anything you would have done differently?
Most challenging, I'm trying to think of the most challenging. Probably when I arrived at the city of Wadena, we had a police officer that we needed to terminate. It's a union situation. So that, of course, created some issues with the union as well. And then there was some question of whether he needed to be terminated and had the process been followed to bring him to termination within the police department? Had the chief of police followed all of the, what she should have done to bring this to this point? I should say that in Minnesota, the title of city administrator, that we do everything a city manager does, a county manager does, borough manager, with the exception of hiring and firing. We do not have the authority to hire and fire. However, we do all of the work. And then the ultimate is that the council approves or does not approve our recommendation. So we held the required public hearing for our union. And we also did a mediation meeting with the employee and the union. All of it went well. However, what I would change is that the process be better documented than it was. And I would have been involved earlier on, in on the process of documentation. That's what I would have changed. Everything went well. The council approved the termination. The union did not fire the termination, the termination, and there was no grievance. So the process went well. It just could have been run tighter, and that's something that I did learn and would definitely do differently.
The next question's a two-part question. If you need me to repeat part of it, let me know. If you have reviewed our budget and caper, what is your assessment of our financial condition? And what recommendations do you have for us for improvement? And to achieve long-term fiscal sustainability without raising taxes? And tell us about your fiscal management experience, budgeting, reporting, cutting costs, building and maintaining reserves.
Okay, I'm going to start with the first part and probably will need it repeated. I have reviewed it. I would say I've gone really deep in depth, depth with it, but I have reviewed it. And I think that overall, that the borough is in good shape. I really do believe that. I, for, I would, obviously, my first thought would be meet with the finance director to learn more about each of the funds and the history of the funds. And to see what is going on, like I said, especially the history, the ups and downs, the trends that have happened before and what is going up and down with that. And then if there were, I'm trying to write it down, any cost-cutting measures that would need to happen. Again, first, we meet with the finance director, learn the history, meet with the department directors. I'd also want to know the CIP, what other projects are going on? And what are the funds needed for those projects? And what needs to happen next with the projects? To see if there could be any cost-cutting measures? I'm going to ask the second part.
Okay. Tell us about your fiscal management experience, budgeting, reporting, cutting costs, building and maintaining reserves.
Okay, thank you. So my experience with budgeting is managing municipal budgets. And as, when I was a clerk in Palmer, we, I did the council manager, mayor, excuse me, council, mayor and clerk budget. So I managed that budget as well, obviously not as large as the overall budget. And then since I left there, I had been managing two different municipality budgets that I worked with, one being the city of Monaga, which is a smaller budget, and then now the city of Wadena. In both municipalities, I worked with the budget from A to Z. Especially in Monaga, we did not have a finance director or a finance, there's a finance clerk. And she did payables and payroll and those sorts of activities. But I did all of the budget. And then when Wadena, we do have a finance officer, but I am responsible for the budget. And I have written all of the budgets for these municipalities. As far as cost-cutting, as far as fiscal management, and I know I'm not saying this correctly from your question, but this, last year, we, the city of Wadena has an airport. FAA requires that the equipment purchased for the airport be used exclusively for the airport. I'm not sure what happened before I got there, but they were, the equipment was being used off of the airport. I did question that right when I got there. We had a meeting with FAA and MinDOT Aeronautics, and it did confirm, they did confirm that, of course, the equipment needed to be used exclusively on the airport. The, the equipment was mostly snowplow equipment, snow removal equipment, of course, a very, very large cost of the equipment. And so we made the determination that the only way that we could resolve the issue was to bond for the new equipment that would be used on the streets and the roads. We did not have the money to just purchase all the equipment outright. So that was completed. And then the next year, question came up regarding new equipment and new activities. And although we maintain a really good bond rating, and there was some capacity, some more capacity for debt, I advise the council to not take on the additional debt. In hindsight, I'm very thankful for that because then COVID came. And that just threw everything into chaos a little bit with budgeting. Things are calming down, and that's a good thing. But I'm really glad that we did not take on the additional debt, did not take on additional liability. So as far as fiscal management, I do believe hands-on and being very involved in the, the finances. And I asked lots of questions about what's going on and review all of the reports. All of the reports are also made public in Minnesota as well.
Okay. And what is your philosophy when faced with a budget shortfall?
Budget shortfall. We have had that. I have worked with that in the past. And we did do have to do cost-cutting measures. We cut the budget. One year, it was 20%, which is very, very difficult to do. And we did have to do some cost-cutting, and it was painful. We're in budget here in Minnesota right now, in my municipality. And we're talking about cost-cutting as well because of, well, because mostly because of COVID. And we received local government aid. There's a question, the, the state has certified our local government aid for the next year. However, there is a, I think it's 1.4 billion-dollar budget deficit. So the money has to come from somewhere to make up the deficit, and the concern is that it'll come from local government aid. So we are looking at what we can cut, what should we cut? And if we do receive local government aid, I do believe we're still in, in danger for 2022. So watching already for 2022, the trends. But immediately when COVID came, there was, I looked at all positions because if we were going to lose all of our revenue, lose quite a bit of revenue, we had to make some changes right away.
Describe your management style. And in your daily activities, how do you ensure accountability and avoiding priorities of the Borough Assembly from falling through the cracks or otherwise being unachieved?
So my management style, and I, I really liked the question, and it really did make me think about leadership philosophy, which I know is a little bit different from management style, but so my, I guess I would say management style is, would be for accountability. I meet with Department Directors now on an ongoing basis. And we talk about what needs to be done, and I expect follow-through. I do not micromanage, I don't at all micromanage, but I do expect check-ins on what has been assigned to them and where we go from there. As far as accountability for Assembly Members and priorities that have been set by the Assembly, I think that's really the focus. That sets the focus and the tone and the direction for the county itself. So as, excuse me, counties are here, borough itself. And so as the Borough Manager, I believe that the Assembly has set the direction. So the priorities of the Assembly are this, this, or that, that is the direction that we go because that has been set by the Assembly. That is a mandate, in my opinion.
What is your experience with collective bargaining and maintaining productive relationships with organized labor?
We are, we're starting union negotiations right now with two unions, so it's smaller, but have two unions, one being police and the other one is utilities, which comprises electric and water. The, one union is more challenging than the, challenging than the other. And that has been a challenge to work with. It's the union rep who's the challenge. It's been a challenge to work with this person. However, I just keep on going. There are times where things can get, in my opinion, disrespectful, but I do not go there. I will not do that. We will stick to the topic and we will stick to the negotiation at hand and continue on. And that has been my process. The other union, the other representative is much different and things are going much smoother. But that's where we are right at this time.
And as a manager or on the manager's side of things, have you ever been before a labor arbitrator or have gone to court over labor issues?
No, we have not gone to court over labor issues. The reason why I pause is the same police officer that was terminated also had claimed PTSD. First, first of all, workers' comp claim, which was denied, and we, he appealed, we appealed the appeal and won. There's a PTSD, there's a new statute in Minnesota that is pretty much states if a police officer or firefighter claim PTSD, they are paid PTS disability for life, and we have to pay their life, their health insurance. So we appealed the claim and it, and I do believe, I should, I should state, I do believe PTSD is real. I really do believe that. However, in this case, it was not applicable. So we appealed that and, and went into mediation, did not fully go to court, went into medi- settled, and then the settlement, the police officer did not follow up with what he needed to, and then it, then the PTS, the Workers' Comp Department took over and the claim was dropped by Workers' Comp and denied, and it has not been reappealed. We've had two other lawsuits involving various issues. Both have, we've been able to mediate, have been able to mediate out of court, and they've been settled.
What do you consider to be the borough's top three opportunities and how would you capitalize on them? And conversely, what are the top three challenges and how would you advise the Assembly to approach them?
I really do, I'm actually really excited, and I, you know, knew about the Port McKenzie project when I was there. And I've actually been reading up on it, I've got a whole pamphlet over here about it, reading up on it, and it's totally a fascinating project, but with the A2A approval of working the permit on that project, I think that there's a real opportunity with the rail extension, and there always has been, but what a huge step forward with the approval. And I think that is a huge opportunity for, you know, a lot of reasons. But it, in my opinion, it's also a great economic development opportunity and a diversification from usual tourism. So that, to me, is a really good opportunity. I do have some questions about that project, but that, and a really good opportunity to capitalize on what is already in the state with the state resources and being able to efficiently move them and then just creating more revenue in the Matsu Borough. And may I get that question repeated, please?
Sure. What do you consider to be the borough's top three opportunities and how would you capitalize them? And conversely, what are the top three challenges and how would you advise the Assembly to approach them?
Okay, thank you. Thinking about this. I, I believe that another opportunity, another opportunity, and I am going to apologize if I am not totally correct in what I'm stating. So I apologize in advance. I do obviously need to learn more about this. But I do think that another opportunity lies in the Hatcher Pass. And I, I, I believe that at this time, private, it's in private, is working, they're working on the project. But what I'd like about that area there is that it is, it is another opportunity for economic development in the borough. And it is another opportunity to, you know, showcase to, not just the residents of Alaska, but all over the United States that do travel to the Matsu Borough. So I think that that's another opportunity. You know, it's, I know it's going to sound cliche, and I apologize, but, you know, I lived in Alaska for a long time. I came here, I'm here, and everyone always talks about Alaska. Everyone asks me about Alaska wherever I go and talks about Alaska. Alaska, it, it's amazing, it's wonderful. It doesn't, it's wonderful how people really respect and love Alaska and are in awe of Alaska. So I do believe that while tourism and COVID has caused, you know, if there are issues there, I do believe that Alaska and the Matsu Borough, specifically the Matsu Borough, has an opportunity to continue grow, to grow tourism. And I do understand there needs to be diversification, but really, people love Alaska. It's truly, everyone always says, that's on my bucket list to go. I always say, you know, it's there, just go now, don't wait. And so I think continuing to grow any economic, excuse me, any opportunities to, for tourism and diversification of tourism activities as well is another opportunity. Challenges, as always, the financial portion of it. The Port McKenzie Project, what I read is $125 million is still needed, so obviously that is a challenge. And I'm, I could not find any updates on that figure, so I apologize if I'm off on that. That is a challenge. I would like to know, and I'm not posing the question to you, but I, what I would need to know is, is that, is that still a viable project? Is that still something that the Borough Assembly would like to continue on and move on? And then, I guess, then I would advise how to move forward with that project. Of course, learning much more about it. I do really believe that project is a, a great opportunity with a lot of challenges. But boy, have a lot of challenges been overcome. Again, you know, it's kind of a double-sided coin with the challenges, with the opportunities and challenges. The opportunities for tourism, also the challenges of tourism because it's up and down. You know, the recession in 2008, and now with COVID, up and down, so it's not sustainable as far as, appears to not be sustainable as far as economic development, but I do know everyone wants to come to Alaska. I also understand about little, all the unfunded mandates that happen at the state level that are passed on to the borough and to cities, and that is, creates an economic challenge as well. I think as far as how I would advise, advise the Borough Assembly on that, and I think the Borough Assembly and the Mayor do a great job of representing Matsu and continuing to work with the legislature to express why the funds are needed and the importance of continuing to grow the Matsu Borough, growing the state, but specifically the Matsu Borough, because everyone understands the importance of the Matsu Borough.
Discuss your approach to and experience with economic development and diversification of the tax base. They already asked that question. I did not, did I? Did I miss one? Sorry, I'm going back.
That's okay.
If the mayor and Assembly adopt today policy or collectively express a stance with which you had significant professional disagreement, how would you express that disagreement and seek resolution? And can you cite an example in your response?
So as I said earlier, I believe that once the Assembly has adopted a mandate, a direction, you know, a policy, that it becomes the direction. It truly does. I may not always agree. So I guess what I would say is that if there is a direction that the borough was, the Assembly was going, and I didn't agree, I would say, I would have to have a basis for not agreeing. I'm not going to just disagree because I personally don't like something. That's, that's not how it works. I would, if I disagreed because I felt like it was a pitfall or something bad could happen, or, you know, there was some reason, I would respectfully present that information to the Assembly. And then I do recognize that the Assembly, if that's the direction, then that's the direction that we go to, that we go down. As far as an example of what I have disagreed with. Sorry, that is not coming to the top of my head of what I disagreed with. I have disagreed on some projects because of funding. And I did, you know, express my concern about funding. We worked through that to actually acquire funding on one of our expansion projects. I didn't agree that we should take it on at that moment in time because of funding. The project was delayed. We were able to acquire some funding, and then we moved forward on that project. But as I stated, if, I would not express my, if it was personal, that doesn't enter into the equation. But if there were issues that I believe could cause the borough harm, then I would express them and hopefully in a well-thought-out manner, and express them and work at all angles to make sure that what I believe were pitfalls were correct, and then present them and have a discussion with the Assembly. I would expect, you know, to have those discussions about projects or any other issue.
Discuss your approach to experience with economic development and diversification of the tax base. Can you share both a success story and a project that did not turn out as well as you'd hoped and what you learned from that?
As far as my experience with economic development, I, I really believe that as, for me as the City Administrator, that has been a really big focus and, and should be. Because the economics of a community are important to have the community continue on. And I just believe that all administrators, managers are responsible for that, for the economic development. I've been involved in, I'm on a board, it's called, the board, the organization is called the Economic Alliance. It's a nonprofit alliance. And I'm the president of that. And what we do is support economic development in Wadena County. Wadena County is, it's a poor county, is the second, I believe, poorest per capita in Minnesota. Statistically, it says that, I don't agree, but statistically says that. So we work to offer economic development opportunities in the county. And, and that has been a really fun project, working with the whole county. Now, within the city, I have an economic development staff person that we work with to develop our, our project, our, our city and our projects. It's a little different in Minnesota. So the Economic Development Director works for me, and, excuse me, is one of my staff. And we also have what's called Wadena Development Authority. It's developed as a port authority, which then they, the port authority, there's a board. The port authority has more authority than just a regular committee or commission. So they can actually levy taxes and obtain funds from the state that are separate from the city. the state that are separate from the city. So the development authority, the development director is a staff member, but also works with that board to continue economic development activities. All of the funding and all of that goes through the city budget, so we manage that for the board itself. So I've been really involved in economic development on that side, from the Economic Alliance Board, and then the Development Authority Board as well. And we've developed a business park, expansion of an industrial park, and actually purchased an old building, the Development Authority purchased an old building to rehab in downtown Wadena. Wadena has old storefronts, which are really cool, but they run down and not exactly attractive. And this building was actually quite, quite dangerous, but it had historical value. Not so much for, to be on the historical register, but had historical value, and so decided to take that project on. It turned out well, however, it was far, far more expensive than it should have been. And it turned out well. We have since sold this building, and a business has come in and has taken it over, and it's going great. The business, the pro, the building next to it, the business owner is complaining because now he said he's getting complaints that our building looks too nice compared to his. So it's kind of funny how one improvement spurs other improvements, because with that, we've had two more storefronts actually improve their buildings as well. So that's been pretty exciting to see.
Please tell us your management style with department directors. Then please describe how you view the interaction of department heads and other staff with the assembly versus the manager's role.
As I stated previously, my management style with the department directors, they have a directive, and they need to complete the directive, and they do check in with me as they continue with the directive. It works really well. I, of course, have an open door. They can check in anytime that they want to. I have had an employee, a director, that I've had on a performance improvement plan for over a year, and there's ups and downs on that. There's improvement, and then there's not. So that employee actually requires a little more time, and that's okay, because that's how it works. I, I have a department director whom is just great. However, I often have to pick him up off the ground and say, everything's gonna be okay, let's move on. We, the city of Wadena owns, it's called a wellness center, actually, it's like a gym. It's, it's beautiful. It's a magnificent facility. It was built after a tornado came through Wadena, and it's $12 million building that was totally paid for in full by insurance money and donations. So it's a really great facility, pools in it and so on and so forth. The director, it, however, the downside, it's all paid for, but it operates in the red all the time. And it's frustrating, and it's, the director takes that 100% to heart, and there are times, he, I always say, he just melts on the floor, and I have to pick him up. During COVID, that facility had been closed, and of course, that just about killed him. And I, I was in a store, and I found a plaque, and it says something, it's all going to be okay. And I gave it to him, and he was just thrilled. Okay, you really mean that, right? Yes, I really mean that. It's all going to be okay. We can work through this. I was having, just a side note, I was having particularly a bad day, and he came in, and we were talking through some of the stuff going on, and, you know, about the bad day related to COVID and some of the mandates. And he said to me finally, do I need to bring the plaque back to you? Do you need to see this plaque? So that was kind of funny. Like I said, I meet with the department directors. The department directors, there's very long-term department direction with a lot of experience, especially one of them that I have with a lot of experience, operates the electric and water department. I, when it comes to council meetings that I, that we have, if they have an agenda item, they present on the agenda item. They have all of the technical, you know, electric, I'm, I'm not going to learn all the background of electric and how it operates. The director knows all of that, so he presents that information. I view my role as managing them and giving them the tools to do their job, and they, and in turn, report to me. And then they also obviously know all of the technical stuff that I will not know. As far as their interactions with, with the, with the council, and I would say the assembly, without a doubt, they have to be respectful. And even if they don't agree with something, I actually do not tolerate that, that, I had an incident of that where one of the directors absolutely vehemently agreed, disagreed, and i- it doesn't matter. That's, that was irrelevant, and we need to do our jobs. So I've had that incident happen, and that we continue on. The directive of the council was the directive, whether we liked it or not.
So you might have already answered this in part of your question, part of your answer, but if you want to expand on it. With a highly experienced senior staff, how would you evaluate their abilities and establish your management approach?
I do, like I said, and I'm sorry to be redundant, but it is truly what I do, so this is how it works, but I do meet with them. I do believe that there's value in each of the department heads. I have to believe they've been chosen for their expertise and what they know. So I would, I meet with them. When I first started in Wadena, I had them, I met with every one of them each day, the first week that I was there. I went to their department. They took me, well, electric and water had to go around the city, but took, and the sewer department too, and took me, showed me their operations, and, and even right off the bat, I could tell who was the expert in their field. I knew that right away. I didn't, of course, understand the ins and outs of those facilities at that time, and it's, that was like within the first three days, and then I actually had them do it again three months later, so that I, you know, knew more, and I could ask more questions about what was going on. But that is how, that I deal with them, and I, I do apologize. May I have part of that question repeated?
With a highly experienced senior staff, how would you evaluate your abilities and establish your management approach?
So that, as far as, that's how I meet with the senior staff and deal with the senior staff. I have the expectations, and they know that. And then, and then, of course, I'm not hard on that. If, if something can't be met, then we talk about it. As I've stated with, I had one on a performance improvement plan. Sometimes there is that this or that cannot be met. We work through that, because it's not always the truth. It can be met. But the others that I, that they tell me, well, this project has this going on, and this is why it cannot be met. Then we talk through it, we work through it, and come up with a solution moving forward.
The last question, I'm sorry.
I was wondering, I'm just gonna ask is.
Oh, sure, I'll.
Okay, Assemblymember Leonard's got a question for you.
I have a question. And I think you've already talked about this. This is sort of a two-part question. One is, have you had to deal with a resident member or council member, I guess, down there, that has gone to a director and stated they wanted something done? And how do you deal when a policymaker, as they said, sort of goes out of their lane? And then the second part of the question is, if you have a director that has disagreed with you, and goes around you to a assembly member, several assembly members, to advocate for them for a position that they have?
Okay, thank you. I, I, I truly believe in communication. So on occasion, it does happen with our mayor, I, who is, I believe, very well-intentioned, but calls the electric supervisor, his title's utility superintendent, directly for about items. I do believe the mayor believes in his heart he's not directing. However, some of it comes off that way. The utility superintendent contacts me to let me know what's going on, and he'll tell me. I, I'm easily able to do this, this, and that, and it makes sense. And some of it is truly part of what he already does. The mayor didn't know. So some of it was, you know, that I called the mayor and said, you know, is there an issue, and can we talk about it? And the mayor didn't know that some of the things were routine and in nature, and that everything was already being taken care of. But honestly, with that, I just called the council member, the mayor, directly, and talked to them. I believe that communication is absolutely key. I'm not shy about asking the questions. If a director goes to the, directly to assembly member, a council member, same process for me. I actually talked to the director and asked what's going on. If they're upset with me, that, you know, it can happen, if they're upset with me, and if there is an issue, I do, you know, understand that their avenue is to go above me, to go above and, and above me, be the mayor, and in my case, the council member, but mayor and assembly, and talk to them. Kind of their avenue to do so. However, I do talk to the director and try to figure out where they're coming from and what is the issue. So far, I've been able to resolve incidents like that by just, by communicating with the, either the council member or the director.
Assemblymember, or, excuse me, mayor also has a question.
Yeah, I've got a couple. First of all, you know, all the rules don't apply to the mayor.
I forgot, I forgot, sorry.
Okay, we're clear on that. Okay. Have weekly and bi-weekly meetings with your directors and your staff? Is that some, is that a practice of yours?
Part of that cut out, so I'm just gonna ask, did you ask if I have weekly and bi-weekly meetings with?
Or bi-weekly meetings with your, your upper staff, your directors?
Yes, I do have meetings with them. Yes, I do. I also, they stop in, if we, if it's an off week or we don't have a meeting, they actually stop in. I've noticed, the pattern is, all of them, they come in to check their mail at our building, and they'll stop in and once a week, and just do a check-in, and we go over everything. Of course, just call if we need to, but yes, we do have meetings.
Yeah, I, I was really glad to hear you were talking about some of the opportunities for the Matsu Borough, the port, and the rail extension A2A and Hatcher Pass. I was glad to hear about that. I just wanted to know, if you're aware of the size, the port leases $4 million, excuse me, the railroad spur is $125 million to complete school bond debt, $27 million. I just had a creak in my throat, excuse me. And we have a road bond, $22 million match from the state. Those numbers scary?
Well, they're big, and they're scary, but I also know that the, from the budget side of, that there is, it can be managed. I did want to show you, I, I was reading this, I think. What a great little report, I love this thing. So I, yeah, I mean, I'd be silly to say those numbers don't, aren't scary, but I do believe that in the long run, the opportunity is absolutely there to, to pay for it, to, it will pay off in the end, I guess is that, that's what I'm trying to say, that it will pay off in the end. And it is a really great project, and I really do believe in that project.
We're on your last question.
Okay.
Are there any questions that we didn't ask that you think we should have?
Um, I think I wrote down a few notes. I'm gonna apologize. I, I got really nervous, and I was having trouble there, and I'm sorry about that. I actually can be more articulate. I guess that was, part of it was, is the $125 million, is that going to be a budgeted number? And in, if not, would the expectation be for an appropriation from the legislature for that?
Yeah, well, it's, it's probably, you know, we pursued Washington DC, it was state grants, it's gone now.
And then, I'll just go on. I'm curious about this project, and, but the Kinnick Arm Bridge, do you ever see that as coming to fruition?
No.
Let's turn that over to Mr. Ada.
Well, if it was a long way down, down the road, based on the economy of Alaska and the federal.
George, I have a question. Look, one of the things you've been in Alaska, and so, the real numbers right now, according to the governor's representative out here, is the state of Alaska is in the hole right now on their current budget, $600 million. They forecasting a shortfall of $2 billion in next year's budget. We are not going to get any money. We are not anticipating getting any money whatsoever from the state. Whatever we do has to come locally. Now, part of our questions to you have been to do that. So how are you gonna tackle that?
Well, I, in the end, I do believe that is definitely going to be a group effort. Through working with the finance, as I said before, with the finance director, with the department directors, and the assembly for priorities. What are all of the priorities of the Matsu Borough, and where, where's the funding for them? Can some of the priorities be changed so that the, any shortfalls can be, I don't want to say averted, because, like I said, for us here in Minnesota, COVID has been, COVID is pretty devastating to our communities, and as far as, it's been devastating so far. So I understand where you're coming from. I do believe we will have shortfalls here, and we are, through our, through the city's budget process that we're doing now, reevaluating the capital improvement plan. What can we push to another date, which I get it, eventually, it all comes due, but what can we feasibly do right now that would help us not only in 2021, but in 2022? Because I think that, I really, I guess if I had a crystal ball, I like to believe that in 2021, we will receive our local government and aid, government aid, but it can't continue forever. 2022, I think, is where, in Minnesota, we'll see the hit of the COVID crisis, especially our cases are up a lot right now. But I think that that's, that's what we're doing. We're evaluating all of the priorities right now to see what we can change, what must be funded, and what can be moved to another date when we believe that there will be funding available.
Well, we appreciate your time this afternoon, Ms. Baurnet, and have a great day, and thank you again for joining us.
Thank you. Bye.
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 Okay, next on the agenda. Just to make sure, will you sit back down? I will do a second session.
Sure, I'm leaving to.
Sure, I move to.
Any objection to leave an extra session?
No, we don't. I'm kidding you guys.
Okay, we'll say, we'll say no. Mr. Mayfield.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, I move Robertson and Brown forward for consideration to fill the borough manager position.
Any objection to that? So those three candidates will be coming to Alaska. One's here, two others will be coming to Alaska. Let's set up a search group, Mr. Roar. And thank you, Mr. Roar, for anything Baker Telly's done. I think you account for the great group of candidates. I think we got the right three. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Assembly. We appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Is there anything else? Mr. Proppes.
I have some comments that have nothing to do with the manager search.
Okay, go ahead.
So Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly, as you know, I don't need to be on TV for this. So COVID money has been being distributed and the Treasury has been updating their guidance. They've updated it in May and June and September. They should update guidance on Monday. A per capita payment to residents of a particular jurisdiction without an assessment of individual need would not be an appropriate use of payments from the fund.
Now, what was that again?
A per capita payment to residents of a particular jurisdiction without an assessment of individual need would not be an appropriate use of payments from the fund. So we have our individual grant program that we were going to help people, you know, either reimburse or pay for the PPE. So Treasury has come out and said that unless you have some type of metric that you, you have people demonstrate need, that is, you know, people may be below the poverty line or some other, you know, more robust administrative program. And it dovetails with some of the other guidance that's already been issued about, there was previous questions in here about utility assistance. And again, it would have to be need-based upon COVID, this, that and the other. So, you know, our approach towards the individual grant program was expenses necessarily incurred due to COVID, which is what the law says. While Treasury is interpreting that to mean it's a government expenditure to private individuals, that the individuals have to demonstrate their need for the funding, which significantly changes the analysis on whether or not we can do it. We certainly, in my opinion, should not move forward with the correct plan as it is because we are relying very heavily on Treasury's guidance for other things, such as the presumption of emergency payroll, the presumption of dispatch, the presumption, if we wind up giving money to the school district, we're gonna rely on those presumptions. That all came from the guidance. And so it would be very difficult to say, oh, no, no, we're relying on your guidance on the one hand, and then turn around and say, we're not gonna rely on your guidance on the other hand and we think you got it wrong. So the other problem is, is that there's a, there's a federal law principle called Chevron deference. And that's a US Supreme Court case called Chevron. And what it means and what stands for is is that an agency's interpretation of the rules that apply to them, unless they're clearly wrong, the court has to go along with that. And so here, the agency has said, pretty specifically, and I don't know if it was in response to one of our questions, because as the manager and the finance director know, we were at some city manager meetings over there with Wasilla and had some discussions with people in DC on the phone who were kind of trying to get answers to some questions for us. And that may be what drove the answer to the question. But it's pretty specific. A per capita payment to residents of a particular jurisdiction without an assessment of individual need would not be an appropriate use of payments from the fund.
So could it be as easy as putting a checkbox on the application saying, have you incurred a $100 COVID payment?
That's the way we already had it.
You think, you think that's?
I don't think that's a demonstration of need. Demonstration of need would be, government, if you don't give me this money, I can and won't do it. The other thing, the other things in the guidance that are here talk about like rental assistance, right? They talk about you cannot do revenue replacement. You cannot give people money to pay their taxes. But you can give them money to pay their mortgage. And if their taxes are rolled into their mortgage, you know, to prevent evictions during COVID, right? If people have lost their jobs or something like that.
You can give people money for mortgages.
If they're subject to losing their house because of COVID, right? So they have these long analyses about demonstrating need over and over. And they basically have come out now and said.
So that's a 9.9 million dollar program?
Yes, yes.
How much money do we have left over now?
I did not bring those numbers with me.
So sure, it's not 3 million?
Yeah.
How much is left out of the state of the grant programs?
About 5, 6 million, between 5 and 6 million, I think, right now.
That isn't, hasn't been spent yet, but we.
That hasn't been spent yet, but we're still.
We're still open. 200 applications that are, yeah.
So there's gonna be several million left.
Oh, I don't know about that. I think by the end, you might end up with like 2.
2 or 3 million.
Maybe, it just depends how many more come in.
9.9 million plus 3 million.
Now, Nick and I have talked and I did have an idea if we're looking at need. Because one of the things we could do is utility assistance is not, as long as it's not our utilities. We could contact MEA and find out what their delinquencies are from April through the current date. They could, we could make a payment to them and they could apply it to those accounts if we wanted to change the program that way.
So MTA, MEA, and stuff.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that would be, that would be another reso to come back to you on 17th, which is change the scope of the grant program. My message today is that I don't, do not think it's a wise 9.8 million dollar gamble to go forward with the individual grant program, given the specificity of this guidance.
You mentioned fire service areas and road service areas one time.
Not road service, but fire service.
How would that work?
Pay for payroll, just to do it at the EMTs.
How much money would that be?
It was about $3 million.
Why don't you start working on that as far as?
Did that include the dispatch and the EOC?
Yeah, the handout I gave two meetings ago had the dispatch.
And there'll be other things that.
And there's gonna be other things. Believe me, I'm getting together another list to bring forward to you on the 17th for additional things to be purchased.
It's, it's not that there won't be other places to start to look at and to maybe look at a little harder. But I have in this folder, and it's referenced in the IM, the guidance that was issued when that legislation was passed to the individual grant program. And this, this specific example isn't in the guidance. It showed up later. And so part of that, part of the challenge with this whole thing is, is the updated guidance. And it's both good and bad. Because it's good because it tells you.
Can we give money to community councils?
Can't sue. You know, we already kind of.
We are, I mean, we have many councils that have applied under the business grant program and have received money.
So just to play devil's advocate for a minute, they seem to also defer to the local government to determine need. They talk about that sometimes. We were able to give money to community councils to provide PPE for teachers. How is this different? You know, in terms of that assessment? And is, is there any way to kind of ask additional questions where we could give 100? Because I think people are, they're already counting the 100 dollars.
I understand.
And there's gonna be.
We can try to ask. I don't know that we're gonna get an answer. The main difference is, is that when you're providing public employees in a school, PPE, it's easier. It's not an individual. It's a public entity being provided or nonprofit being provided. This says specifically, a per capita payment to residents of a particular jurisdiction. That's exactly what we were gonna do.
But then it says without.
Without an assessment of individual need would not be an appropriate use of funds. So to play devil's advocate, maybe we got that one wrong. If we get audited, we're gonna have to pay that money back.
Right, so can we, I mean, what do you think it would take? What do you think documentation-wise you would need to assess individual need? Like receipts of what?
It's not about receipts, it's not about reimbursement. It's about need.
We're gonna have to have income information.
Okay.
I don't want to become, first, one, for $100, it's way too invasive. Two, to administer a program like that, we don't have enough staff or time to even set it up. I mean, now we're talking about a welfare program, basically. And that's a whole different scenario. But I can tell you from under box, people are not gonna want to disclose that kind of information.
What was?
Do we have?
Okay, that's what I'm.
Do we have?
We have it open.
We have it open.
That, we hold back all the advertising part as soon as.
What was, what are the rules on transferring Karen's money to the schools?
So there is a presumption, there is a presumption, and we find it here. So just like with the, with the firefighters and EMTs, they're presuming payroll to be covered under this, right? So there was a presumption with the school district that $500 per elementary and secondary school student are eligible expenditures, such that schools do not need to account for the specific use of the funds up to that amount. Translated, you can hand out $500 per student and Treasury is gonna go, as long as it's 500 per student, you don't have to justify how you spend it.
How many, how many students do they have? 19, 18?
Last year, their count was 19,035.
And we could figure that into our budget.
Well, the tricky part about that is, and they addressed this in the guidance a little bit, is you have to be careful about the school district getting money from both the state and from us. So we gotta get our hands around what source they got the other 4 million from.
And in the sheet I gave you a couple meetings ago, I did have a breakdown of students and how much exactly the school district got in Karen's money directly from the state.
Right.
So.
So we might be able to give them another 5 million.
Yeah, subtract that out.
So we have to back out the 500 per student that they already got from the state, but then we get to add that back. So it's about 5, 5 and 1/2 million, something like that.
With, with budgeting in the spring, how does that work?
Yeah.
Uh, that's, that will be discussion to be had.
I think I asked you guys to do that.
I think they're pretty.
But on a $500 per capita basis, as long as it's out our door by December 31st, by December 30th to the school district, it's, it should.
So we better, you better have these conversations with the school district, Mr. Ada.
You'll have to reach out to them.
Let me ask you, would it be safer for us to do as much as we could with the EOC and the dispatch and the fire, fire payrolls and do that as much as we can and then do what's left over?
No, there's more, there's.
There's, there's. We're saving more than that.
With $9 million on the personal PPE thing not being able to be done, that only takes up half.
To answer your question, George, yes to all of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes to all of that. ELC will have to talk about because they get funding from other sources. And so there's really not a lot of dollars there. I mean, their waiting benefits are covered by other grants.
And so, so a lot of the, a lot of what we're talking about here has to come back because you're talking about, uh, it would be an amendment to the prior reso, just like the last time when we brought it back in October to do the other, you know, other, other programs. So if there are other direct grant programs and stuff, I guess get with Shaya and myself and we'll see if it matches. Don't shoot the messenger. It's, I've been telling everybody for months, it's a little bit of a moving target and it's moved again.
So you're gonna come back with the resolution and you're gonna have all this laid out detail for some.
Just like we have before. And I will have my staff contact utilities and get a number from that.
You guys.
Get an estimate.
And that way we know, because if you guys approve it, then on the 18th, whatever, we.
Right, because it's all conceptual until, less than until anybody approves it.
So I can definitely have those discussions with the school district and.
Yeah, both of you all.
Well, yeah, Shaya and I need to be on those.
Oh, absolutely.
We can reach out to their, you know, Luke and.
Yeah.
Tell them we have budgeted woes.
So you were waiting for Murkowski's office because you had asked him this question. Do you consider this the answer from them? Or are you still? This is the answer.
It does not get any more clearer.
Okay.
Again, if, if there's a, if there's an audit and there's a question, most of what we've done to date, we're gonna point at the guidance and say, look, we relied on the guidance, we relied on the guidance, we relied on the guidance. And because you're talking over $9 million, 9.9 or 9.8 or whatever the number is, that's an awful big number to say, well, we rely on all your guidance over here, but we ignored your guidance over here and went forward. First of all, you're likely to lose, given the state of the federal law. And it's gigantic, it's gigantic.
The big changes we wanted, you know, that, I think it was Senator Kennedy from Louisiana and Senator Sullivan tried to push through was to make changes so you could backfill revenue.
Yeah.
They didn't get through, not, not much got through that. They did get a bill through, but it didn't really.
So the other two things I've heard about are the housing assistance that Palmer and Wasilla are giving. So I don't know if that.
Well, let's check.
Option for us. And then Anchorage said they were doing workforce development.
We could probably, you know, fund the state fair for a little bit more money.
We can give it to the, we can give it to Palmer.
This, Mr., I'll let Mr. Sumner make a question.
We can give it to Dogwashers.
What?
Did you ever put your hand up before?
Oh, no. Anything else? Any comments?
Oh, well, I did have a question about guidance. So if we, if we put this money out the door for these other things and they later change the guidance, we have problems? We have problems? Or can we point to the guidance at the time and say, how could we know what the future guidance?
I will do my best to point to the guidance at the time and/or if money's out the door, but it hasn't been spent, we'll contact a grantee and clawback.
But what you're saying, in either case, we would have a problem.
It, it, it's problematic. I mean, if they turned around right now and said, we got something in the guidance that said,